The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, December 8th at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, 35468 T-Time Circle. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move to accept.
Any comments on consent agenda?
We're going to discuss each one of these quickly. Yeah, okay. No, you just have one question.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, okay. It has to do with the contract, the state contracts?
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, and I know the state contract bidding typically is the best pricing, but it's also the easiest for us because it's been negotiated. My question is, in the past, I've seen sometimes state prices have not been as good as what we've been able to do when we've gone out to bid. I think, if memory serves me correctly, it might even have been with one of the vehicles that the district purchased, they actually got a better price than on the state contract. Did we, we didn't go out to bid on these, we just took it straight off the contract?
We did take it straight off the contract, but we did receive another local quote in one case to where the state bid was actually $1,200 cheaper than the actual local quote. So, we did not take this out for bid.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Yeah, but we did look for local pricing to make sure that we were getting our best bang for our buck. So, it was $1,200 cheaper on the Kubota tractor with the local vendor, and it was about $10,000 cheaper for the Longreach mower.
Right.
So, we have those prices at the office if anyone wants to see those as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, guys? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor Steegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to accept the action agenda?
So move. Second.
Okay, public hearing, resolution number 2017-1117-65, a resolution of the Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District to adopt a seasonal corporate membership rate. Do we have any comment from the board? Jim, Jim, you want to go first?
We're proposing the seasonal corporate rate that we've talked about. I think the cornerstone of the corporate rate is that it has, is capped at 200 rounds for a six-month period. And one of the things that we would discuss would be the number of people that the corporation could name to utilize those rounds. It makes, to me, as we look at corporate rates going forward, it makes more sense to structure them with rounds as opposed to numbers of individuals. In this area, we don't have a lot of corporations where they have multiple individuals that can get away enough to actually make a corporate rate that is based on the number of people as viable as if you go by a number of rounds. That's all I have.
Okay. Any comment? Ray, go ahead.
You want me to go first? I got a handout that I would like for the board to consider. If I, do I hand these out? Am I allowed to do this?
Yes.
Sure, thank you.
You got any gift to the, out there?
We'll tap into the minutes.
Sure.
Basically, what I just gave some of the guys here and some of you people is, I can keep a copy for myself. Basically, what I did was I said, okay, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but it seemed like there was a good possibility that we were going to seriously consider a seasonal corporate membership. And, you know, I, my own personal opinion aside, assuming that we were to go ahead and do this, I said, okay, if we're going to do a seasonal membership, let's look at the year-round corporate membership that we've already approved and base everything off of that. So basically, the year-round corporate membership is five months, four people. I did, all I did was math. If it's $10,000, that's $2,500 a person. You take 2,500, you compare it to the single membership of 3,158, and there's a reduction there of 20.9%. And then I took the seasonal membership, which is 2,328, and applied that 20.9% to it, multiplied it by four, and it came out to $7,440. So if, my feeling was, if the year-round corporate membership was acceptable to everybody, by doing a simple math process, the seasonal one should be acceptable to everybody. Of course, I would cap it at four members like the year-round corporate membership. And the number of rounds, to me, doesn't mean very much. I don't think, you know, I think if we do it like this, you give them as many rounds as they can get. But like I said, if you compare it then to the year-round corporate membership, you've got a reason you can justify it. That's what I did.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else?
I guess I, yeah, I have a question. I do want to definitely discuss what Ray brought up. At the last board meeting, not the workshop, quite a bit of discussion was back and forth about the membership. And we advertised in the newspaper a $7,000, and that's what's in this resolution today, $7,000 membership, a corporate membership. Within the resolution, it really leaves out some, what I believe is some of the details, but maybe David could address that after. But more importantly, at the last meeting, it was said that, that Dan was going to get together with Jim to maybe look at some alternative plans, okay, some other ideas. At the workshop, it came up, which was a little bit of a surprise to me, and I asked the question, since it was brought up at the workshop, are we going to hear about this potential alternative? And I think, Dan, I think you said to me, and I'd have to go back into the minutes, that yes, there was something coming up. Is this, is this the proposal that you and Jim kind of came up with?
Yes.
Okay. So the proposal was, as you've just stated it here, and other, the start dates and the stop dates are what?
The first or the 15th of the month.
Okay.
Or five months. So it's similar to our five-month seasonal.
So at any first or 15th of any given month throughout the 12-month period?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how, how would you monitor these rounds? I, I see that as a lot of extra work on your people, so that's one of the things I was trying to keep in the back of my mind. How do you propose that you're going to do this?
The basis of this is just similar to a play card. So we could issue 450 play cards to them, then when they came in, we could, could mark off the play card.
Like a punch card or something of that nature?
Yes.
And are you proposing, because I saw something came in late yesterday, and I didn't have an opportunity to discuss it, and I know you always reach out to me and ask if there's anything, and same with the district. I got a relatively late email updating me on what this somewhat new proposal would be, which kind of caught me off guard. I, you know, I prefer to have the information at hand so I can come and meet with you and discuss it to make sure that, you know, if I have any questions, they can be answered instead of bringing it up here at this particular forum. So you're proposing six people?
Yes, well, basically, that was a suggestion. I thought we would talk at the board level about how many people it would cover.
Okay. So, okay, then I'll let, I'll chime in after because I certainly have a lot of questions. I'll listen to my other board members.
Basically, Jim and I sat down and talked about it on multiple occasions, and this is the best thing we could come up with, that it reflects, in essence, what we've done in the past. If you, if you recall the play cards, that seemed to be the simplest way to keep up with it. And if we want to do this, it doesn't make sense to do something specifically for Pike Lake. This seems to be something that possibly we could sell to other people in the, in the market. And if not, then I don't think we've lost anything. That would basically, as I understand it, though, we've advertised the $7,000 as a five month membership, so what we do here is either vote that yes or no, and if we want to amend it, I guess we have to go back to publication. So you're kind of, you got it or you don't. Here's.
So if we amend it, David, if we amend this, it has to be re-advertised, we have to notify the people?
If we change the price.
Oh, specific to the price?
Because right now, it's been advertised as a five-month seasonal corporate membership for $7,000. That's all that's been advertised, right?
Right.
So, how we define corporate membership, you know, is, and I think the, the $200 play is also, is also advertised.
Right.
So, that's what is up for approval or disapproval, or up for approval today, is a five-month seasonal corporate membership.
$7,000.
For $7,000 with a maximum of 200 rounds.
And it doesn't have to define how many players in that resolution.
Right.
It can be, so you could have 10 players on that.
That could be a policy that we could adopt separately. Because like I say, right now, we have, the, the district doesn't have a specific definition for a family, doesn't have a specific definition for the standard corporate membership as far as how many members that is allowed to encompass.
I, I thought we had a, a number in the 10,000 a year-round membership, do we not?
I don't think we have something officially. I mean, nothing officially.
Really?
Four members.
The board recommended four members, but they said anytime a corporate membership is interested, they would bring it in front of the board to approve those four. That's what the board decided at the, at the meeting when they set the rate. So it was a, the idea was a four, four people involved in that membership.
Yeah, the general consensus was four people. Yeah.
Jim?
I think this makes sense. And it makes it, I, I don't think it's Pike Lake specific anymore at this point, it just gives us another membership alternative for, for someone who would want to take advantage of it. So I don't see any downside to what we're talking about.
Okay, Mark, do you have any else?
Yeah. I, I certainly see some merit to this. I see a little, little extra work for the, for the district, I mean, for the operations, but that's, you know, that's up to Jim to figure it out. My other question then would be, have we had an opportunity to think of corporations that this would fit to in this area? Have we gone out and done any research to find out if there's any interest? For an example, you know, you have large places like Allen J., you have the hospital. I'm sure those people wouldn't be looking at probably seasonal, they probably, we were looking at year-round because they're here year-round, okay? So I would think it would be better if it wasn't limited to a five or a six-month period because corporations are based down here. They're not going to be traveling back and forth. So have we done any research and gone out and reached out to some of these people and said, gee, you know, we're looking at this type of program, is there an interest, do you think?
No, we haven't, in the period of time that we've brought it up, but I do agree that it does lend itself, you know, for next, next year's budget meetings when we have talks, I actually see our corporate memberships being more based on the play card scenario than the actual number of, of people scenario. So we do, what I would see happening between now and then is going out to Florida Hospital and finding out what that market is because they might want something for 200 member, you know, 200 plays and 10 people. You know, but we haven't had, I haven't had the opportunity to do that yet. But those were the two, those were the two businesses that I thought of first, was Allen J. and the hospital, two of our bigger employers in the area.
Okay. Like I say, I, I think there's a lot of merit to this. The reason we're at the, where we are right now, at least in my humble opinion, is somewhere along the line, past history, somebody made a decision that wasn't authorized to make a decision, and it came up in June of this year at one of our board meetings, and it was a follow-up in July. This was geared towards our friends Pike Lake, and I still see it as a way of being geared, at least this year, towards them, okay? The fact that the board was very upset when they found out that a special decision had been made years back, I don't feel, in my, this is once again, my personal opinion, I don't feel that I want to venture down that road where a decision was made, wrong decision, and it appears that we're essentially doing the same thing now for a special exception. Okay? If you said to me, we have other opportunities out there, then, then I'd say, okay, it makes a little more sense, but it still seems like we're putting something special together at this point in time. Maybe we need to revisit it next year, I don't know. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, I'm trying to be objective about this, but it's real hard for me to do that. It really is. Because when we found out about the special membership, and by the way, there's only two of us here left when we did this in June or July, and it was a unanimous decision to stop the special rate for Pike Lake. Unanimous. And Ray, this $10,000 was, we had a couple of people wanted a $12,000 corporate membership. We had, I think, two of us, I'll have to go look, two of us didn't even want a corporate membership because of the, the bad taste in our mouth and what had happened. And Pike Lake is a friend of ours, but I'm just trying to be objective and I just can't. I just, I'm not in favor of, because to me, this is another special deal that we can't, we have a lot of our members here paying, buying a full membership that's only here five months or six months. We came up the last board with a corporate membership and have them come to us because we were afraid somebody might put a corporation together just to get it. That's why we're, we want to see it. But I, I just feel that this is just another attempt to do something special for a special person, and we can't, we can't do that to everybody, and I just, but I, I've thought hard about it, but I just, I just won't be able to support this. Is there any public comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Pete DeLongchamp. I guess one of my comments would be why you feel compelled to discount golf at peak winter season to anybody, you know? I mean, obviously, you have rates, you have offers that we all get offered as a membership. Why are you compelled to discount it to certain people? I don't, I don't understand that. I think if you're going to have that type of a discount or a deal, then every member's going to have to have an opportunity to take advantage of it. I know I've been here quite a while, I paid an initiation fee, which was taken off the following year. No one tried to compensate me my initiation fee back. Nobody gave me a special deal to do any of the things I've done as a member. I, you know, I play, I practice, I pay. You know, I don't, I don't understand why would we discount golf at peak season? There's plenty of people that are ponying up and paying, and I'll tell you right now, from working in my hometown, trying to save a failed golf course, free won't pay the bills. Discounts are fine if they work out, but it's taken us four years to get rid of the free golf at our home course. And then people say, well, why did we fail? Because free don't pay the bills. That's it.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, Pete. Anybody else?
My name's Jim Jonas. I'm relatively new here, been here three, four years. But my thinking is right along the same lines as Mike, and I think Pete made some great points there, too. My only other addition is, you got to think, you got to think long-term here, that this looks like a good deal today, but you got to, a gain today may be a loss in the long term. You got to think in a bigger, bigger picture here. And, I mean, if you're concerned about keeping your older members here, people who've been here for years paying the full boat, and then all of a sudden, here we got these special deals going, you're going to have some dissension in the ranks, I think, perhaps. So I think you want to look at the bigger picture, not just short-term here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Charlie Shields, resident. I don't think, I have to agree with Pete and Jim, I don't think we should ever even consider a corporate membership here, okay? We, you know, there's, there's just not enough business in the Sebring area to even consider having it. And not only that, we have people that come down here for five months, primarily are Canadians, okay, and they pay the full rate that we advertise, all right? So I, I don't think that Pike Lake, or, or Allen J., or anybody else, you know, we should have a corporate rate. And counting rounds, to me, is, is not the way to go. I mean, we, we've messed up many times in the pro shot on counting or following up on things like that. It's just too much work. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, back to the board. Any other questions?
No.
So we're voting on the resolution.
Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor Branson?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor Steegel?
Yes.
President Gilpin? Motion fails.
Resolution number 2017-1117-66, a resolution of Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District to establish the 2017-2018 Assessment Appeals Committee. I think, I think I need a motion first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Omar?
So as part of our annual process, we, we allow residents and property owners to make an appeal during the month of November. November 30th is the deadline to submit an appeal if you've been incorrectly billed or billed at the wrong rate, or just want to contest your assessments. Every year, we appoint a three-person committee. I am one of the representatives. The board will need to appoint one of the supervisors, and then we appoint one of the property owners. And we've sent out a few emails to get interest from the, from the community to see who's interested. We had two candidates who initially requested to be on the committee. One was Ms. Jennings, who lives on Myrtle Beach, and then the other is Ms. Johnson, and she lives on Bobadilla. Ms. Jennings has been kind enough to withdraw her interest, so I am recommending that Ms. Johnson be appointed. I'm making that recommendation. She's here this afternoon, and I'm not sure if the board would like to just talk to her and kind of get some background on how long she's been a resident here at Sunland Lake.
You can come up, please. And before you say anything, thank you for volunteering. Go ahead.
You're welcome. Good morning. My name is Suzie Johnson. I have, I came to Sebring from Lakeland to work at the college. So I started at the college in '02, and I retired in 2015. I have been a resident in Sunland Lake since 2004, so things have kind of changed, and since I'm retired, I'm kind of interested in becoming involved in some of the things that's happening in Sunland Lake because I see a lot of things that I would love to see improved. I talked to Omar about some of the things yesterday, but I, it would be an honor to work on this board. When I first saw the appeals, it says, hmm, appeal my association fee? You can appeal your association fee? Okay. So when I saw that, I was kind of interested. How do you appeal your association fees? They are what they are, so there you go. But anyway, it's an honor. I think Mrs. Blake, the one that withdrew her name, I did give him an option. I says, well, you know you could put two names in a hat and pull them out, but now make sure you pull my name out the hat. So anyway, but thank you, and I'm looking forward to working on the appeals committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have, anybody up here wants to volunteer? There's one supervisor on that. Does anybody here want to volunteer?
Volunteer, I don't, when is it?
We're going to set a date, first two weeks of December in order to bring it back to the board.
Can you do it?
God willing.
Okay. We got Mark.
So we got Mark, Ms. Johnson, and then myself.
Okay. Do we need a, a motion for that, or just the?
Motion.
Motion. Can I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay. Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Steegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Thank you, everyone. Resolution number 2017-1117-67, a resolution of the Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award RFQ 17-09 for the Golf Course Toro-Osmic Hydraulic Satellite Irrigation Upgrade to West Coast Turf for $148,094.02. Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mike? Are you the one going to tell us about this, or Jim?
Jim.
Okay.
Yes, I think as many of us are aware, our current system on the Golf Course Network 8000, for other than the Miami area of Florida and parts of Georgia up to Macon, there's actually only six of those systems left that haven't been upgraded. So in the last year to, to get parts and so forth, they've stopped making parts. So when something breaks on our current system now, we either have to have the part that is broken sent off and repaired, or we have to try to find a used part. That, and the instability of our current system got us looking at new systems. The, the two systems that are out there are, we have this Toro-Osmic system that's being presented today at a cost of $148,094.02, or the, the next stage of the system, which is approximately an $800,000 cost for a fully electrical two-wire system. Both of those options were presented to the board, and looking at the cost-benefit, the Osmic system was, was chosen as the, the better of the two choices at this time. We put this out to bid, it, it's a Toro system, so it's a proprietary system. Other people could buy all these parts and install them, but they're not really, you know, competitive with Toro, who's, Toro and Rainbird are the top irrigation people, so, and West Coast Turf is, is a very reputable company. So I, I feel certain that this is the best way to move forward if we're going to stay with the hydraulic system that's more cost-effective at this time.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from up here?
I got some questions.
Okay, Ray. Okay, Ray. Go ahead, Ray.
I just wonder on, Jim, on, I have to do this one. On page 13, on the, on the warranty, it said a minimum of one year. I was wondering why we only want to do a one-year warranty? Or is that the right thing to do? We seem to have stuff breaking down all the time. So, I just wondered.
Yeah, let me see the... So...
Did I get the right page number? I may have gotten the wrong page number, but it's a one...
That's right. You're correct.
I was just wondering if we're right in a one, in a one-year warranty with this? At $148,000?
Let me take a look at what you're looking at.
Is it contractors?
Sure. Okay, so the, the one-year warranty is not what we're getting. That was the minimum for the RFP. Uh, is it three years? It's three years, bumper-to-bumper.
Okay, is that in here someplace?
Uh, it's, it would be, you're looking at the RFP. It would be in the Toro bid. So, in the bid specs from Toro.
Do we have that? Okay, wait a minute.
It's not in here, but I'll go, I'll print it up and bring it to you. I don't see it in this. The, the packet here is just the RFP. I don't actually see... Is Toro's bid in here?
Yes.
I don't see it, if it's here.
Let me go, I mean, let me go print off a total bid for you from Toro, because this is just the bid page, correct?
Do you mean from Westco turf? It's a, it's a three-page. You have it in your board packets there. We have a, the satellites are all broken down. That's the actual, what we receive from Westco turf as the bid. So, it's a three-page bid.
Okay.
What we don't see, I think, is the, we have the bid, and I'm looking quickly. What we don't see is the actual warranty or guarantee on this. That's, unless, there's a lot of printing here, so.
I didn't see it when I went through it the first time. That's why I couldn't push it up.
No, so actually, it's, so it is more than the... So, when you see the first page of where it shows Pat, Pat Duggins' signature, it says page 14 on it. Then the back is 15, and then 16. And then after that, there's Toro's proposal there.
Right, yeah. But there's no mention of it.
Right, and I'll find the warranty information in there.
That I would need to see. My next question would be on that same page that you're talking about. At the end, just before, just above the total of $148,000, it's a package discount for 27 holes. We're doing 36. So, I was wondering why we're not getting a 36-hole discount. You see where that is? That's under installed.
Yes, I see that.
I just, we should be getting a 36-hole, I would think. Only three more to go.
Right. They don't have an answer to the 27-hole question.
Okay, I'll go on to the next thing. All right, well, there's two other questions, uh, three other questions. What is the effect going to be on the play when we start doing this? Is this, you mean we have to close the course? Do anything like that?
Uh, the, it's actually the things that are just replaced as the satellites, so that's on the side of the holes. If you've seen those little green boxes?
So, there's no effect on play?
Well, they're going to be at the satellites, but, so I wouldn't say they're 100% safe, but yeah, play will continue.
So, we don't call, we're not closing?
No, there's no closing whatsoever for that.
Okay, and how much time is it going to take for them to complete the 36 holes?
Uh, he was hoping three weeks, three to four weeks.
Okay. On page, on page five of 27, at the, uh, number six at the very top, I, I'm not quite sure what that is all about. It says, "In addition, we would like to receive pricing as an option on installing upgraded grounding." The upgraded grounding would consist of 10-foot ground rod, six-foot ground rod, uh, six-foot ground plate, and 100 pounds of gem material. Is that something we're considering? And if we are, what's that going to cost us?
Page five of 27. We're not considering extra grounding, are we, Ramon? No.
So, that's, we're not, that's out?
Correct. Yeah, that's just part of the RFP specifications.
That's all I got.
Well, I think, Ray, do you want to get these answers before we do anything with it?
Oh, yeah.
How much, would this get us behind, then?
I mean, I know this is important, but I think we...
No, I understand.
That we do, especially on the discount issue, you know?
Can we call Westco turf? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you want us to come back? We'll go to public comment, and then we can come back, or to it? Or how would you like it? Okay. Do you have any public comment on this?
Good morning. Uh, Bill Norcross, resident. I just want to reiterate the suggestion, our idea about the courses being closed for any extended amount of time. I mean, last year, the year before, the year before that, 14 years that I've been here, we haven't had two golf courses open. All right? So, we are also considering some upgrades on some of the fairways, bringing up the level. And that's going to take time and closure. So, I want to try to understand. Everything is going to be at a minimum, because people are paying for full two golf courses to play. And it's important that these projects are done expeditiously, and at a time, we all understand, we all understand in the summertime, you can close a golf course for a couple of weeks for maintenance. That's excellent idea. But, you know, when it's closed, and we play one golf course three or four times for the whole summer, it's not right. So, I hope that idea of, because these are controls, and they are off the fairways. I understand that. But, you know, there's other projects that are coming up, so please consider keeping both courses open. Thank you.
Uh, Bill, just to answer that, I, you can go sit down. This year was a little different, I think. Don't you think, Jim, with unexpected stuff happening? And we were, we were closed a little longer than I, I think they...
What I'm saying, say, history of the last 14 years, we haven't had two courses open.
Well, I, I think they're aware of that.
Yeah, I think, you know, this has come up at our meetings repetitively. I think what I would like is one of the board members to work with me, to see the courses that we're trying to model, and to see their maintenance practices of, of how much they're closed for summer work. Because traditionally, the less you close down to work, the worse your conditions are going to be. So, there's going to be a positive correlation between how often you close for aerification and other maintenance practices, how often you close to, you know, fill low-lying drainage areas, install cart paths. All the closures relate to upgrades. So, i-if we want less of a golf course, we can, you know, less conditions, we can close less, or, and, and have more availability. Or we can, you know, go through our practices and close more and have a better course. But, you know, we'll see. If you can get someone to work with me, it's pretty easy for Mike Stevens to reach out. As he got the cost per hole, he can reach out and find out, you know, how much they're closed. The other issue you're going to have is if you have two golf courses, and one was aerified six weeks ago, and one was aerified 10 days ago, which one do you think you all want to play? You don't want to play the one that's, that got aerified 10 days ago. So, so what you do is you make your maintenance crew run around to open up a golf course that, that nobody wants to play. But I think it's a good exercise to go through it, because to my knowledge, I, I don't know of any of the courses that I think we want to be like, who don't, who don't close.
I don't mind closing the course. I, I assume that you prepare a schedule, far in advance, of what your plans are. If you would just maybe send us all a copy of that, we can look at it, and if we think it's good, we'll tell you it's good, and if we think it's, we want to challenge it, we'll challenge it. Is that reasonable?
I think that's perfect, but I think we need to establish the level of course we want, and to benchmark the other courses.
That's the dumbest question I've ever heard. What do you mean by level of course? We don't know that by now? Come on, Jim, we want, we want the course to be as best as possible. You know that.
I just told you, my professional opinion is if, if you benchmark, the more you're closed, the better it's going to be. But we'll work through it. You go through the exercise.
I want to see what Casper wants to present to us as far as closing of the courses.
Correct.
I just wanted to, Jim, my only statement about that is I think you do the best you can. What Ray's asked for, is certainly something we can do.
Oh, you bet.
Is there any other public comment?
Are we just replacing the controllers? Three weeks ago, so I... Are we replacing just all the controllers? That's what, this is all, that's what you're doing?
So, we're converting from the Network 8000 system that, that's basically obsolete. When, when we take our 36 holes offline that would represent two 18-hole equivalents, there's four left in Florida. And so, we're going to a new software system, the Osmic software system, and basically new satellites.
So, basically, it's that you're able to irrigate, and does that also add fertilizer and things like?
Uh, no, it, basically what it is now is just that our systems break down on a repetitive basis. They're not, they're not reliable, and there's no replacement parts for it. So, it brings us up to a system that they're supporting, you know, that has current software, and has new satellites.
And that's both courses?
Both courses.
And what, what is the cost of it?
And Pete, just to let you know, we've been working on this, or Jim has, for about six months. And the only other option's, isn't it 1.8 or 1.6 to redo? So, we're, we're not putting a Band-Aid on it, but we have to, we have to do it.
Well, I do know, you know, irrigating a golf course is a, a big thing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if, if you don't have a system like that, it becomes very labor-intensive, so.
Right. Appreciate your question. Anybody else? Okay, Omar or Ramon, you have some answers?
Yeah, so we just reached out to the Westco turf representative. They have confirmed that he's going to send me an email in writing. Uh, they typically give a one-year warranty. They decided to throw in an extra two years, so it's a three-year bumper-to-bumper warranty. We're going to get it in writing in a few minutes here. Uh, he's also confirmed that that was a mistype. That is the discount for 36 holes. So, that is the price for installation and everything.
Thank you, Omar.
For 36, correct.
Any other questions, guys? Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Steegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Resolution number 2017-1117-68, a resolution of the Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award RFQ 1708 for the water treatment plant process instrument and control system upgrades to AMP Check Electric for $200,000. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mike? Tanya, who's?
I'll give a, just a quick background. Craig A. Smith, they did a presentation to the Board of Supervisors back in July. So, I think, you know, two of you were here then. The, the upgrade that we're recommending today is a upgrade in the controls of the water plant. Um, so, number one, so that the water plant will reset itself without it having to be done manually. Uh, if you remember the presentation and the conversations that we've had, we've had, this has been an issue for many, many years with our water plant. Um, with the lightning storms that we've had recently in the summer, it caused our plant to go down multiple times.
Right. And, uh, the system's 30 years old. It's, um, the system, uh, that they bid on will be the state of the art for this area. We've talked to the engineer company, and, and once it's installed, that should eliminate a lot of our problems. So, and we're very, 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 very happy to finally get it done, because it's been a few years that Tanya and I have been going back and forth with this.
AMP Check is the sole bidder on this project, unfortunately. Uh, you know, Craig A. Smith did reach out to other companies on the East Coast, because they are from Boca Raton. The timing, it could not be worse for us to even try to get a contractor over here. But AMP Check is a local company. They are highly recommended. Um, Jim Orth, who was with Craig A. Smith, has had multiple conversations with AMP and has submitted a letter of recommendation for this project. So, in addition to the upgrading the controls, they're going to put some, I guess, a new breaker on the generator as well. And the, all the controllers are going to be replaced, and also, there's going to give us some remote capabilities with this plant, so.
And it's also a local company, and they respond very, very quickly here. So, it's really a plus for us to have somebody in this area that will understand the system, so.
The bid specs for this project was 119 pages, as I mentioned in my memo. So, everything's online. It's kind of foreign to me when you, you know, when you look through that, but that's why we rely on our electrical engineers to handle, handle the specifications.
How long, how long is this pr... I, I've been over there with you, so I know what they have to do. It's, it's amazing. How long is this project going to take? And how do they transition from one system to the other system?
There'll be no shutdown or anything like, there'll be no shutdown of the water or anything like that. He expects a, a month or two, you know, from start to finish. The engineer will be on project at least once or twice a week. I, uh, who wrote the specs, so we will inspect everything that they do. Uh, they're also giving us a warranty on this, on this, which is really big for anything that we, we, we install. We should always, always, always get warranties, so.
So, it's a one-to-two-month project?
Yeah.
It'll stay online that whole time?
Yeah, because we have a backup generator if we've got a shutdown.
I was going to say, because there has to be a point in time where they switch it over.
Right, exactly.
Okay. But it'll be online the whole time? Everything will be done parallel? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just...
When do you think it's going to start? Because if I'm reading this right, the final drawings are not completed yet, correct?
I talked to Jim Orth this morning. He's, he's going to let me know.
Right, okay.
He's working with AMP to, you know, once a bid is awarded, they're going to discuss that as far as the start date. So, I'll, I'll update the board as soon as I know.
We plan on, uh, meeting sometime next week once, once it's been okayed by you guys, so, and then we'll move on.
So, we have to okay it, and then he'll do the final drawings?
No, no. No, the final drawings are... No, no, the final drawings are, are set.
Or are they done?
I'm sorry, where did, where did you see that?
Um, the front page. Says the second, last paragraph, you know, the remaining $50,000 will be used towards the final design drawings and construction engineering fees. So, I'm assuming it's not, the final plan has not been drawn.
Oh, the final plan is finished. I, I was just saying that, um, we have $50,000 budgeted. Sorry.
No, I saw that, but so the plans are completed?
Plans are completed, yes, yes.
Oh, the plans are complete, right, yes. All right, so, okay.
I'm just saying the remaining, the remaining $50,000 will be used towards the engineering fees of the project.
Okay.
Anybody else? Public comment?
Supervisor Steegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a discussion, uh, with the Island View kitchen renovation.
Um, so, the, the kitchen renovation right now, uh, I would say we're at an impasse in a way. Uh, the new design that stays within, inside the building, um, when Kevin first toured, uh, the kitchen, that, uh, he was convinced that would work for us to stay inside the building. Uh, what he didn't realize was that there was a lot of refrigeration space that was outside that kitchen, um, that wasn't designed into this kitchen. So, unfortunately, the problem that he's having right now with the kitchen designer is that the new design has less refrigeration space than we currently have now, instead of more. And, uh, they've been unable, at this point, even though they're still working at it, to try to figure out a way, uh, to get Kevin the refrigeration space he needs while staying inside the, the footprint, 'cause we know if we have to expand the footprint, the costs are gonna go up quite a bit. Um, the key to doing that is, is being able to utilize the back area without, without covering it, and they haven't been able to come up with a design for that. Uh, where we're at right now is we're looking for, I've contacted a couple contractors, and Cliff, the architect, has contacted a couple contractors to get, uh, some better pricing. Cliff has a concern that even though he has priced the two options with, with his knowledge, he wants to get, uh, some more outside input as to what those two different costs are gonna be before we consider moving, moving forward, so the, so the board can be more fully informed of what the cost would be to work within the current walls that they would oppose, and what the cost would be to work outside those walls. Um, so, we were actually hoping today, uh, to present the plan of staying inside the walls, uh, but right now Kevin isn't, isn't happy with the fact that we're losing refrigeration space instead of gaining it. So, until that can be fixed, if it can be fixed, staying inside the walls, uh, we won't be presenting that option. So, um, right now, we're hoping, uh, to have something ready for the December meeting, but most likely it's gonna be the January meeting that we'll be getting back to you.
Jim?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, guys. Who's first?
I'll ask. Um, I know this is a tough project. Wasn't Cliff the one that originally was in, uh, we had a number of people involved. Wasn't Cliff the original person that came in here and presented to us when we looked at renovating the, the building itself, knocking out walls and, and so on?
Yes.
And he's the one that, I, I believe we probably paid a retainer of, I don't know, $2,500 or something to do this. Okay. At that time, it came back at some, I'm gonna throw a number, I think it was about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, and it was a little surprise to the board here. So, we asked him, no, let's not go and knock out walls, let's kind of scale it down, but provide Kevin with the necessary equipment in there to do the job. So, he knew what the requirements were. We went to him and said, well, no, 1.2, 1.3 is not gonna do it. Can you scale it down? We've now just got scaled down, he took, I think Joe, and Joe can jump in. Joe has been working diligently with, uh, with the architect. And Jim, they go out to Lakeland, they think they have the perfect fit, a footprint that looks good, and then they come back and Kevin starts to reexamine all of this, and he says, "Wow, we're getting less this, less this, it's not quite what I thought." Is there somewhere along the requirements document here that we're, we're missing it? That Cliff doesn't understand what we really want?
Um, Joe, I don't know if you want to answer that.
I don't think so. I, um, the original million and three, or million and three-five included a lot of things that were not kitchen-related. Uh, the movement, the relocation of the bar, several other things. Um, so, when, when they scaled it back to nothing but the kitchen, the number came back at $800,000. 300 of which was the building expansion of 1,100 square feet on the north side. Um, we asked them to reconsider the existing footprint and just removing all interior walls and basically start with a big gymnasium and doing what we needed to do. Um, they made a diligent attempt to do that. They put lots of, um, in Kevin's estimation, lots of well-designed flows and, and equipment and whatever, uh, but it didn't allow for all the existing equipment that Kevin has and needs to keep, i.e. the two refrigeration units, the warmers, and different things. So, um, I, I don't think the architect has done anything we haven't asked him to do, but I think the exercise that he just went through has demonstrated that we probably can't do anything workable within the existing footprint. So, the, the request we've now made is, if, if $300,000 is the cost for 1,100 square feet, what would the cost be for 300 square feet additional or 400 square feet additional? And would that accommodate the space, would that give us the space we don't have today that would accommodate all Kevin's needs? So, um, it's been a progression of thought processes, I think, but I think it's been done pretty diligently, and, uh, I think they've made every effort to get us where we, where we can make sense of the dollars. Does that help?
Yeah, it helps a lot, Joe. Um, so, they decided what we're going to have as far as new equipment and things of that nature, but they were basically taking out existing equipment?
The existing, the existing equipment is, for the most part, mobile. We could put it anywhere we had available wall space and floor space. Um, but, yeah, they didn't provide...
Cliff didn't count that in?
They didn't, they didn't provide enough space for that, yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to know. So, he, Cliff didn't prepare for that part that was gonna be the mobile equipment, is what I'm hearing?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I, the way I look at it is, you know, Cliff came in and did a needs adjust, uh, assessment based on what we needed and made a recommendation to do that, and it was basically a million dollars for the kitchen. And then we conveyed to him that that was beyond really the budget that we were looking at, that we were looking for something more affordable, and could he stay inside of the, the parameter of the building that we have now? So, so what they've done is they've done their best, their best, uh, work that they can within that building, uh, but Kevin has, you know, the wants, I guess, needs, need-slash-wants that he needs to meet, and they really, at this point, have not been able to, to get down in that $700,000 range that we were, I mean, we didn't have a number, but we were just trying to push the number down and stay inside the, the footprint. Um, they haven't been able to do that yet where they can stay inside the footprint. Um, and then Joe has answered it, you know, very well, that they're looking at, do they need to expand the whole original footprint? And then also, they want to get the costing to see, so if you only get 400 square feet of the 1,200, how much does that actually save you?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Yes, I guess Kevin, Kevin, uh, we've asked Kevin repeatedly, and I think he's done a pretty good job of identifying, uh, what he needs versus what he might like to have, and getting rid of the like-to-have stuff. So, I mean, there's cases where we could spend $20,000 on an oven that's kind of new technology, or we can spend $5,000 on the kind of ovens that he has today, which are convection ovens, and do a very good job. So, you know, we've, we've skinny the equipment side down, I think, to the bottom line, the best number we're gonna get. So, the space is, is now the, the only cost issue we have.
Dan, you got any questions? Ray?
No, I would just say, keep in mind that if we're only gonna, if we were to do this, we're only gonna do it once.
Yeah.
So, I would think that we should, again, if we were to do this, and I'm not saying which way I would go, but we're only gonna do it once, so do it right. Well, don't bother, 'cause I don't want anybody coming back three years ago, you know, later and saying, "Oh, we got a problem with the kitchen, size of the kitchen."
If the, if the design we currently have would have worked, um, without regard to the refrigeration needs, they felt like we were 10 to 15 years away from having to expand again, if ever. And that was based on state-of-the-art equipment and the proper flows and all the things that Kevin needs to succeed.
Well, you guys certainly got a, uh, tough job, because, uh, to justify any kind of expansion, it's, you know, I could look at anybody and say, "How are we ever gonna recoup a million dollars?" We're not. I mean, it's something for our community. Um, and that's the way I look at it, but, uh, I just know it's a difficult job, because I could tell the way you guys have been going back and forth, that, that something's not simple. But, uh, unlike anybody else, you gotta get it down as low as you can, and then we have to make a tough decision here. But, uh, I think you guys are doing, it's frustrating, I'm sure, but...
I appreciate that. You know, it would be frustrating, but the, the truth of it is that I'm very impressed by Cliff and CJ's professionalism, and, and they're, they listen. You know, so when we ask them to do something, they really put 100% into it. So, I know when we get to the final analysis that we'll be comfortable that they've, you know, basically turned every stone over to, to find every possible efficiency and savings that we can have. So, um, they are good to work with. If you talk, if you tell them you want something, they, you know, they listen.
I, I do have a, a question, I think it's for either you or Mike, uh, on the lanai? Are, are we working on that still, or? Okay. Uh, could you give us an update on that?
Sure. Uh, yes, currently, uh, we went out to a, a local, a local vendor and looked, looked at, uh, doing, I would, it's, I would say the southwest portion of the lanai, so basically when you're walking out the back door, that area to the right, um, three panels that face south and two panels that faced west. Um, and then also putting something on this east end of the lanai, uh, to work partially as a visual screen, but also somewhat as a wind block. Um, the, the local vendor that we use, that we've used before, that has done good job, Blinds ASAP, uh, just for the area to the right of the screen door leaving the back of the lanai, it was, uh, $5,300 for that. And the product they were using for that area, they were suggesting a different product for this east area, so it was gonna be in the $7,000 to $8,000 range to do it with Blinds ASAP. Uh, Mike's, Mike, our preliminary quote with Mike or more in, uh, the $3,500 to $4,000 range, so basically about half, half price for Mike to do it in-house. Um, so, what we're doing now is working with the online vendors, 'cause obviously Mike's team, you know, doesn't do this, so we want to be very, you know, careful to research the people that we're getting and product we're getting online to make sure that it, that it meets our needs. Um, but, uh, you know, we're going to go forward with the project if it, we can keep it under that $5,000, $5,000 mark, 'cause we know that it's gonna make the, the patio a lot more functional. And that, that's one of our goals, is to basically expand our, our seating area. Um, and then we're also, we've had some good suggestions, um, that we're gonna work on to create a better atmosphere in, in this banquet room. Um, you know, working on some plantings, not, not plantings like we use in the Island View to separate people, but more plantings that will soften, soften the atmosphere and, and work on some lighting, and then also, um, capitalize more on the view, so raise the shades at night, which are all good, good suggestions.
Very good, Jim. Uh, is there any public comment on, uh, on this?
Bill, no question on the, uh, kitchen renovations. We understand it has to be done, but what kind of bothers me a lot, we have a lot of valuable people in the community that have suggestions, that have been in business, own restaurants like the Olympic, that on a practical sense, their suggestions, their input could be of some kind of value. We have one lady, I don't know if she got back to Tanya or not, but, uh, Carol Shushmishova or something, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce her last name. Anyhow, she owned a kitchen tile business in, uh, Palm Beach, and she had a lot of ideas as if somebody wants to approach her and say, "Look, what do you think? This is what we need. We're gonna have to serve 300 odd people, we need the space, and we need refrigeration and whatever, and maybe she can help you." Not only what is practical, but maybe hedge you to some discounts. You know, it's, uh, it's a, it's, it's nice to have all these professional people give you ideas, but they're out there to sell you something. And look at the condition we've had here. We have a bar there that's not functional as a bar, really. We have, the building was built, the soundproofing wasn't right, that the, uh, window tinting wasn't right. There's a lot of things that was wrong, a lot of things that were right. But, I think the outside suggestion would be surveyed, anybody who wants to participate that has the business that can, uh, contribute to some good suggestions. I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Charlie?
Regarding the blinds, this is two years old. Just thought I'd bring that up, you know? We started out with enclosing the place, refriger, you know, air conditioning and all that. Now, hopefully, we get down to just running out there and putting some blinds, which I would assume that the general manager can write a check for, and it can be done in a weekend, but we just can't seem to get to that point. Then I have a question on the kitchen upgrade. Is that held up just ba- basically because of refrigeration? Is that what I understood?
No, it's, it's space. I mean, there's more than refrigeration involved. There's some warmers that he uses, uh, that are fairly sizable and are necessary for banquets, and there's other equipment, um, than just refrigeration that we don't have in for.
So, we can't rent a truck or, or a unit to do that?
You mean and do it outside the existing footprint? As opposed to expanding?
Yeah. Just a thought, I'm not gonna, don't want to debate it, but...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyb... Thank you, Charlie. Anybody else? Okay, anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I, I have one question on the blinds. You, you said three panels on the west side. How much of the west side does that cover?
So, the... So, the west side, that covers from the corner of the building down, down to the first, uh, stuccoed pillar.
Okay, so it's the entire west side for all intents and purposes?
No, the, uh, the entire west side, I'm estimating, is probably about seven panels. So, it, it just, it covers the first two where, where the couches are there.
Yeah.
It, it covers for the people to, where our, where our patrons usually sit at that time of day are right there where the couches are, and then the tables to the east of them down, down this end of lanai. So, it doesn't cover...
But you have additional seating to the north of that, if you will?
Correct, yes.
That doesn't get used for the same reason. So, why, when you're doing this, would you not do the entire... So, why wouldn't you're doing this, would you not do the entire west side?
Cost would be...
The sun comes from the west, so it's gonna be just as offensive in one part of the west wall that is another. I mean, I, to me, that seems like half a fix.
Sure.
And we're not talking about a huge amount of dollars, and I totally agree with Charlie. We need to get this done, we've been talking now for two months again, so...
Mm-hmm.
You guys have any comment on that?
I, I agree. If you're gonna do it, you should do the whole side.
I'm gonna go with them, I'd do the whole lanai. I mean, again, we're only gonna do it once. If you're, if we're gonna do it, let's do it the right way.
So, we'll put this together, we'll, we'll put this together for the next meeting, and it might end up being a budget amendment based on, based on what the costs will be. So, we'll, we'll put it together and, and get something back to the board at the next meeting.
Mike, what's, uh, what's the timing from when we say go to when you guys can do this?
They figure it's, it's, uh, gonna be about two weeks delivery time, once I put the order in.
So, it would be done in a month?
Well, yeah, once I put the order in.
Yeah.
Well, because we're gonna do it in-house, it's gonna be done next year. So, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we can get this done in January, the days start getting longer and the opportunities to use that space become more prolific, so, you know, I, I think we need to push to get numbers, get numbers approved, and to get the project completed.
We only priced out of what we were told.
Yeah, yeah, we're, it's not your fault.
There's no criticism here, okay? Let's just, let's just reconsider and do it right.
I mean, I can probably have a, a quote, you know, by Monday morning.
Great. So, we're not gonna get together again till...
I think December eighth?
December eighth, so as long as we have it before December eighth.
All right, I'll, I'll have a quote for who I went through, uh, for that bit.
And Mike, if you could, uh, let us know after you get everything? Because you could communicate with us, so, okay?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a discussion on the rules and regulations for the golf operation. Mark, if you wanna...
Well, I'm kinda kick it off, but I've already done my part. Uh, I'm not sure if everybody has a draft of the rules and regulations that we're looking at in June. Just to give some background for the people that aren't familiar with it, uh, over the years, we've had a lot of information available out there, but it's been in multiple locations. So, in June or so of this year, it was decided upon that we should look at putting all of this in one easy place, and so it'll be accessed by all members. Uh, it'll also alleviate a lot of extra work from the golf operations people, such as Jim and his staff, when somebody comes in and asks a question, and now they have to kinda run and search to say, what is the policy on this? So, we were tasked to come up with some ideas. Andy's group, uh, or Andy Kestling presented or created document with, uh, which the bulk of this is actually his work, so I wanna give him credit for all of that. He's taken existing documents, incorporated them into, like I said, a single document. I then talked to a number of members, and then some of these are my own thoughts. It is strictly a document, a, a working document. I don't subscribe necessarily to any particular points in here. Uh, and secondly, um, when we do discuss this, you're going to see that this isn't necessarily policy per se, as it's kind of policy mixed in with, let's say, golf membership amenities and things of that nature. So, if somebody picks up and says, well, that's not really a policy. For an example, if you know that we have a program that says, we have a referral program, if you refer a new golf member, you'll get some credit towards your membership the following year, or the one-year free membership if you purchase a piece of property, first-time home buyer. That, I don't consider that a policy. Maybe I'm wrong, and maybe, you know, David can, can say that. I consider more a policy that says, this is our dress code, you won't be out there in jeans, you won't be out there in cutoffs and so on. So, this document is kind of a combination of both, so it'll probably have to be rework, redefined. And then we'll put it on, hopefully, on the website, so all members will have access to it, as well as probably ma, make it some form of available for those people that don't have access to the website in a hard copy. I distributed this to all of the members on the board. I reached out to the golf operations people, I gave it to them to make their comments, and I also reached out to the golf committee. The golf committee, in all fairness to them, declined, they didn't wanna really get involved in this, because they felt it was overstepping what their, their charter was. So, I said, fine. Uh, so, it's up for discussion. Hopefully, people have made, um, revisions or changes. The only thing that I am concerned of, and it might be a lot of extra work for Chrissy, is if a change comes about on here, I'm not gonna be recording these specific changes, so maybe in some of those minutes, you might have to do this verbatim, so that we can come back with a new revised version for the next meeting, and hopefully can get it approved and printed out in the January timeframe. Okay? So, open it up to anybody here.
Uh, Jim, I'd like to, if you would, try to lead us through this.
Sure.
Okay?
So, with the rules of regulations, I would say the, the bulk of the document, uh, as you look at hours of operation, those, those are, you know, standard, what we have been doing in the past. Uh, when you look at the membership description, uh, what is currently called a, a family membership, that, that description there is, is probably the bulk of what we need to work through today to determine. Uh, the, the rest of the descriptions of memberships are pretty generic. You know, it's just classifying, that single means one person and, and so on, but the, uh, the definition of, of what, uh, what we sell as a family membership or a two-person membership now is, is I think the primary work that we need, we need to do, and I'm sure we're gonna need, um, David's guidance as to how, what we can and can't say, and in working out what our intent is, what do we intend for a two-person membership to be, uh, and then what legally, how can we do it?
Yeah, Mike, uh, I only marked, I only highlighted two, two words on this whole page, and both of them said "family."
Right.
So, um, I'd like that to become a full membership, if, if we're legally bound to that, I mean, if we can do that, because family implicates a lot of stuff. And that's not the, that was not the, I don't think, the wording was meant to be "family", it was meant to be "together," two-person membership.
Exactly. Um, the county land use regulations defines "family" as one or more persons occupying a single dwelling unit, provided that unless all members are related by blood, marriage, or adoption, no such family shall consist, shall contain over four persons. So, that would be four people not related by blood, which would still be considered a family if they're oper, if they're occupying the same dwelling unit. So, what we need to decide is how we want to define family when it comes to people that are not blood-related. I think that's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah, but would, would it be any problem to, to do away with the word "family" anyway?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay. I mean, I know we gotta work together and figure that out, but just the word "family"...
If we wanna call it "couple," if we wanna call it "group," if we wanna call it...
Or full, full membership, uh, something like that? Because it is a full membership.
Mm-hmm.
But...
Doesn't the implication of, of a, I understand where Mike's come from, and I'm, I'm just trying to throw this out here. Doesn't the implication of a full membership really mean two people or up to four? Any two, any four?
I said, that's what we need to decide, because we're not gonna say, because family has an implication, you know? And, you know, if we look to the, the way county defines "family" for land use, you know, that's what I just read.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, if we want to, if we're gonna use the word "family," we want a different definition, you know, because we're a subset of the county, you know, and it could be argued that that's the definition of "family" as far as the county is concerned. Um, if we wanna use a different definition, we either need to use a different word, or we need to specifically define how, how we want "family" to be defined.
I guess the confusing thing for me is the not blood-related. If you've got four people, wouldn't two of them likely be sons or daughters of somebody?
Potentially, yeah. But I say, as far as the county is concerned, if you've got four people living under the same roof, not, you can have up to four people living under the same roof not related by bu, blood and be considered a family.
Okay, all right.
So, I mean, four, I mean, basically, four roommates would still be considered a family for county purposes.
We don't want that.
Exactly. It's my understanding.
And I don't, I don't think we wanna limit it to couples, because it was also designed for people who do have children under eighteen, to allow them to play golf, so I don't think we should take that out by defining it as a couple's membership.
What, what do we disagree with on this family membership as it's, as it's stated? What's wrong with it?
With this definition?
It's what?
With this definition that's in front of us?
Yeah. I mean, there is a definition of "family," what I wanna know is what we object to it.
I object to having somebody give me an affidavit that they are sole domestic partners, and that they're, neither of us are married, and we're not related. I mean, we don't need to be knowing that.
Well, those are the conditions, but I'm, I'm, I'm just, for a minute, Dan, excuse me, I'm just talking about the actual definition. I agree with the conditions that we need to look at, but the definition of a family as it's stated here, I don't think is that bad.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I, I totally dis, I totally agree with that, excuse me.
So, that would be our definition?
It's just whether we call it "family," or whether we call it something else is the question.
Yeah, that's, that's all I care about is, because we had, uh, we had a, a daughter and a dad, trying to get a family membership, which I don't, you know, that, that's family. But I don't know, you know, how far we wanna go with that. What, what this was intended to do would be two people buy a membership, that's a full, and it's a full membership. But now, "family" could be, you know, two cousins, but, you know, it could be any...
Well, you could say immediate family.
And, and, and the word "family" puts that in there, and that's what I object, I don't object to the membership, but the word "family" can, is far-reaching.
Oh, we can, I mean, we can call it a, a, a couples or a marital, you know, we can call it, we can, we, make it however we wanna do it. That's the question is, is what type, what is the board's desire for the types of membership? We obviously know what a single membership is, that's one person. So, if you're going to have, if you're going to offer a discount for a, you know, group, what is that group? Is it one people, two people, four people, you know, whatever it is? And like I say, it could be, if you're gonna require marriage, you know, then that's just that simple, you have to be married, or you can't get this membership. Um, if you wanna be, have a couples' membership, where they don't, it's not required that they're legally married, that we can call it a couples' membership, but they have to be under, living under the same roof. Um, there's, if you wanna give it to, if they've got, if you wanna allow minor children to play, I mean, we can say a couple, you know, we can put that in there, you know, that minor children are allowed to take advantage of that. We just need to figure out what is the type of membership that we want to offer.
Look, are you okay with the way it's worded here, it's under "family" membership? So, the only thing we have to change is the title of what the membership is? I mean, is that what we're, we're saying? I'm all confused. I mean, this one-year membership provides the member and spouse, or significant partner in residence, and children up to eighteen unlimited play. Sounds good.
I agree.
So, we're just looking at changing the name of it, right?
Yeah, that's, that's all I was, but plus being, um, specific, because, uh, Ray, I don't know if you're familiar, but when, when I got on the board, there was, there just, uh, we had two people that were boyfriend and girlfriend, not living together. Them getting a, a family membership, and then somebody else come up, that were boyfriend and girlfriend, come up and wanted a family membership, and it got turned down, because they weren't living, I mean, this all stems from not being equal. And all I care about is if one person gets one thing, I want the other person to be able to get it. I'm not, I don't wanna split hairs, but this whole place sometimes has, has not been fair. And we need, we need to do something to make it fair. Now, if we're gonna let two people who are boyfriend, girlfriend, get a membership together, that's fine, but I don't want one getting one and another one not, and that's been the problem here. I mean, we have so many special things going on, that I wanna stop that.
I don't think, and I, I do agree with Mike, uh, you know, I don't think we're here to say, uh, boyfriend, girlfriend, let's say, uh, significant others, uh, I don't wanna be, I'm not gonna judge those people, I don't care. I really do not care. Maybe some other people out here do care. I, I don't, what I just want is something that says, brother, sister, that's entitled to a family. I just want it consistent across the board, so what Mike said is, and when I walk through the door, if I am there and I have, my sister moves in with me, and I'm eligible for a, whatever you wanna call it, family membership, or a full membership, however you wanna define it. I think that's the piece that I want. Just make it so that if Bill walks in, and he states one thing, they say, no, you don't qualify, somebody else walks in, and they say, yeah, you do qualify. I, I don't quite understand how they come up with some of these things.
See, that's the, that's the problem we, we're trying to fix.
Well, in fact, and I guess then, that's the question is, is a, would you want a brother and sister to be able to get a family membership? You know, they're not married, they're related by blood, but they're not married, and if they're adults, you know, then, you know, arguably, they would have to have two separate, you know, memberships. So, the question is, because we could call it, if you wanna call it a couple, um, the question is, is whether it's, if it's, if you're thinking of some sort of marital relationship, or if you just wanna give a discount of two people, you know, wanna have a, have a, get a membership together because they like to play together all the time, or, or however that works, you know, how, I mean, it's very easy to draw up a definition that can fit pretty much any, you know, we can easily call it a couple, and then just say, you know, two people, period, you know? If you wanna include minor children, we can say, you know, two people and any, and, and up to two minor children, and call it, so call it a family membership. So, I guess that's the question is, is what is the defining issue that's saying, you know, or who are we going to allow to be included, and who are going, who are we going to specifically exclude from this type of membership?
The, the issue that Mike's referring to is people who did not live together, but were allowed to have a family membership, and then there was some reason that that was allowed to happen. But we probably should disallow that for the future, so that we don't have any issues. So, I don't care if you do father, daughter, that's okay by me, whatever, but, you know, they need to be in residence together, and we need to define how many of them qualify, plus, uh, minor, under eighteen. So, I would say, two, two people in residence together, plus any minor children in the household should be done, and you call it full membership or whatever.
And that might be the answer.
And I agree, and I think the definition that's there is completely adequate to do that.
Apparently, it wasn't too adequate, because we share in that catalog.
It wasn't observed, but it, it, by itself, it's adequate. The fact that people chose to go around it is a different issue.
So, if the defining issue is in residence, we can say, two adults in residence together, along with, do we wanna put eliminate, limitation on minor children, the number of minor children, or any number of minor children?
And that's there, and there's no limit, and I don't see a need for one.
The, the real question is, do you want couples, or do you want family? I mean, do you wanna allow the father, daughter, or not?
No, because then I think you're gonna get into, I mean, the, the father-daughter situation we have is a very elderly father...
Right.
Who probably wouldn't play golf if his daughter wasn't there, but if my daughter gets a divorce and moves in with me, that qualifies me to, to do it with her, it shouldn't. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't think you wanna go there. That's another one of those special situations, special deal things, that I think we need to stay away from.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we define it now and deal with it, don't have to deal with it again.
I was hoping you would tell us, David, while we get...
You, I mean, you, you can, I mean, it's not, you, you can, you can say, you can require marriage, you can say, you know, where, you're gonna, you said that they have to be married, you can say it's gonna be a couple, you know, it could be just two people, um, it's, it's how you guys wanna do it.
Well, aren't we open for some lawsuits if we, you know, if we...
No, I mean, no, because there's, I mean, all sorts of marriages are legal now, I mean, there's, there's not, I mean, like I said, we're, we're not discriminating for, you know, based on...
But we have lots of family memberships where they are not married, but they are living together.
Well, I say, then, I mean, that's the, the, the question is, is where does that, where does it break off? You know, where, at what point are you going to say, you know, if you're living under the same roof, you can't have a group, even if you're living under the same roof, roof, you cannot qualify for this membership, and here's why? And what is that cutoff?
But then you get a...
Is there anybody on the board that doesn't think what we have is... Is there, is there anybody on the board that doesn't think what we have is adequate?
Yeah, I'm getting lost here. Give me what condition there is, to Joe's point. What, which situation would present itself that doesn't, is not covered by the definition of family membership as it is? What condition would come up? I mean, we can change the name of family membership. I'm not saying that, but what condition would come up that we, somebody would have to address that's not defined here?
Right now, I think we have-
Yeah, the elderly father with, with the daughter who lives with him, who's his caretaker.
Right. Well, that's an exception. You know, any rule that you have, there are going to be unique situations that we'll have to address. But for the most part, I, I see this as it is, is, is fine. Now, Dan, to, the qualifications is a whole different story. I'm just talking in that first two lines.
I, I won't get to public comment, okay?
Maybe we should just strike. May, then maybe we should just strike the, all of the aspects of the qualifications, okay?
No, I don't agree with that.
I said maybe. I didn't say, I said maybe we should. I'm, I'm just looking at some of these and, you know, I, I wholeheartedly agree with what Dan said earlier on about the affidavit. But that was, that was a legal, somebody got it legally and that's why they put it in there. And so, we could scratch that right off the bat if that is in, in agreement with the people here. Because I, I, I'm pretty easygoing when it comes to some of these things. I just want it, like I said, consistent across the board. So, that when my daughter moves in with me, she can be part of my family membership or whatever you want to call it, okay?
So, the board agrees marriage is not going to be a requirement?
Absolutely not.
I don't think marriage should have to be a requirement. No, I don't. That's my personal opinion.
Not in today's world.
So, are we ready to talk about the qualifications?
Go through them, yeah. That's what we're here for.
Um, I, I see this as maybe a template that a company would use to decide whether they were going to award benefits to a significant other. Um, I think it's overkill. Um, I think there's a lot of things on there that are basically none of our business. Um, I see two lines that make sense to me. We intend to reside together for an indefinite period of time. We're not related by blood. And that's what I thought the definition was to start with, and I'm not sure why we would want to put any additional qualifications to that.
Can we maybe do this, because we could be on this for hours? Okay, it seems like everybody is in agreement that the first, other than the word being family, whatever, is in agreement with the actual definition. And now, it's under the qualifications part. So, if we went down line by line and said, in the qualifications, for an example, become a significant partner in the residence, an affidavit testing to the following. Scratch that maybe, that affidavit. I'm just, does everybody agree we should do that, to scratch that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, we scratch that. Now, let's move to the next one. Have a committed relationship of an indefinite duration. Should we scratch that or keep it?
That's redundant.
Scratch it.
Scratch it.
Okay. Uh, we intend to reside together for an indefinite period of time.
Keep it.
Keep it.
Keep it. Okay. We are the sole domestic partner of each other.
Redundant.
Scratch it.
Scratch it?
Yes. Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Neither of us, neither of us is married.
None of our business.
Right. Was that a keep?
That's, that's none of our business accord, okay. Both of us are at least twenty-one years of age and mentally competent. None of our business, I guess, right?
Yes.
We are not, uh, related by blood.
Keep it.
Anybody else?
Why?
So, you don't have to deal with the two sisters or the father, daughter, um...
So, you're eliminating the father, daughter thing?
I think you eliminate the father, daughter thing, and I think you eliminate the two sisters that we currently have as, as family members.
Yeah, well, actually, it's a non-issue now, but it was, it was. No longer an issue, yes. Okay, we have financial responsibility for each other? Scratch it?
Yes.
Consensus? Yes, no? Okay. Agree to notify the club, uh, no, that, that automatically would be eliminated based on everything else that's been said. So, we scratch all of that. So, the only thing we keep under the qualifications is we intend to reside together for an indefinite period of time and we are not blood related. Is that an accurate statement?
Do we, instead of indefinite period of time, I'm just throwing this out. Do we want to make it the length of the membership? I mean, word it in such a way that it reflects at least the length of the membership that they're applying for?
If you get a divorce in the middle of your membership, is something going to change?
Yeah. If you get a divorce in the middle of your membership, is something going to change?
Yeah, we won't give them their money back.
That, that happens with some frequency and there's a fight over who gets to keep the membership.
Right.
All right.
We could do that.
Oh, they're already, they're being residents together.
Yeah.
They would be, that's right.
All right, so based on all that, I'll come up with a
Okay.
new defin- or revised definition.
It, it's pretty simple.
Do we want to keep that family membership designation or do we want to call it something other than family?
There's a lot of documentation says family, so.
I think, I agree. I think, that's how we're going to define family, that's fine.
Okay. Um, just on this issue, is there any public comment?
Jim Jonas, seasonal resident. Just to add more, one more worm to your can. Have you opened up the possibility then now that two fellas, two buddies from wherever, come down here in the winter and they share a place and they get a, they get one of these memberships then? Because they're two guys living under the same roof for an indefinite amount of time, not blood related. So, they could, they could take the benefit of this family membership versus two single memberships.
As a significant partner. So, it's covered here.
So, that's, that's allowed now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
I mean, that would probably infer some things that some people wouldn't want inferred, if you will.
Well, I-
But if they choose to do that-
All that aside, they're, they, they're meeting your criteria. They're,
Mm-hmm.
They're living under, they, they, they pay the rent on the, wherever they're living together. They share the rent. They live there for six, whatever time they're down here for the winter. They become a family under your definition.
Yes. And we have people that are, some of them are full-time down here and have a roommate come in for six months. They are considered a family membership.
So, that's already happening.
That's-
Yes.
Exactly. That's happening.
All right.
Okay. So, based on what you just said, I would say that if they're down here for six months, they're considered family. They would get a family membership.
Yeah, I just, I just, so that's, worm's already in your can.
Hmm?
That worm's already in your can. That's not a new worm. You've had that worm in the can already. This whole issue of defining family, that's already in there.
Well, we, we thought it was, but, you know, it's, this whole thing comes, stems, and it's going to be Jim's responsibility to make sure that these things are adhered to. I mean, that's the problem now. A lot of us read this and give completely two different ideas, but, you know, I don't want to say Jim because it was done by somebody before Jim, most of this stuff, so. But it's, it's ca- it's trying to give Casper direction. So, what's, you know, and I don't want to get into my own personal feelings on what I feel, this and that, but I just want it, Jim, uh, fair. If, if one, one group of people can get it, I want, if the same circumstances, they can get it. And that's not what's been done. It's, we pick out certain people and they get it and the other ones don't. So, I, I'm more interested in making it equal.
Right. And I, I think the key is the way you word your definition of a couple or a family or whatever you want to call it. You've got to be very careful how you word that so that two sisters, no problem.
Have you seen the definition?
Two buddies, no problem.
Have you seen this yet, the definition of family? I'll show it. You can look at mine and tell us what you think.
Yeah, well, I, I've listened to your discussion. I just want-
Look on two lines, if you want to see it.
Yeah. But then you just struck out several things on your definition.
Right. Under qualifications.
To broaden the meaning, I guess, is what the goal was.
Correct. Yes, exactly.
Right. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
Bill Norcross resident, I'm just curious about, you eliminated some qualifications and then you accepted others. And I'm trying to, you say like, uh, a father, daughter situation has been eliminated?
Father, daughter situation was never part of it.
It never was.
Well, it's not considered a family?
No.
Never was.
No. That, that would be something new. We, because we had somebody try to do that.
A father, daughter is not considered a family when you have two, two outside people coming together? You've got to be kidding.
Father, daughter.
We've defined the offspring relationship, if you will, as under eighteen.
As part of the membership.
As part of the membership. So, again, any father that his daughter gets divorced or whatever and comes down and lives with him, you know, we don't think that the adult daughter ought to be able to play golf as a member.
The adult daughter.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If the daughter's under eighteen, she's included.
Right, I understand that. Well, I think when you come up with this final, finalization, you should have what was in the past, what is suggested and what is eliminated. So, everybody understands. Because it, you know, you're just dropping out qualifications, you know? It gets a little confusing out here because you've got paperwork and we don't.
But again, if you, if you take the two criteria that we just all basically, I think, agreed to, not blood related and living under the same roof.
This is, this is online, Bill. You can mark it up. You know, we would welcome that.
Well, as I say, I kind of understand, but, you know, you've been dropping qualifications here. You know, you were passing, which is fine. Okay, I understand that. But, you know, when it, when it finally comes down to the, the resolution, what you're going to implement, it's simple. Everybody understands what was in the past, what is the change and what's eliminated.
Okay.
Okay?
Maybe to help you, and, and I apologize because you haven't. A lot of the things that are on here were never something in the past. They actually were added in for the discussion here. And it was decided they haven't been in in the past and therefore, we don't want them in the future, so we're scratching them completely out of it. So, it, it isn't a change. It was never there. This was a suggestion. They said, no, we don't like the suggestion. Take it out. And so-
I, I understand. It's a, it's a good, make sure that you do have the rules and regulation in its down pat. But, you know, this all kind of like stemmed from two women that were living together and they were considering themselves a family. So, that's, you know, and then had that be, that had to be kicked down the road for a long time. And I, I understand that. And Mike wants to make sure that everybody has a fair shake. I understand that. But, you know, when you start changing things, people say, well, what did you change it from? Where you're going to and this is what it's going to be. So, now, if you could just have those simple, simple operations, two people in a house, living together, fine, they're a family. I got it. All right? Simple.
Thank you, Bill. Ms. Jones?
Okay. Bill is correct. It is confusing. We have a committed relationship of indefinite duration. Okay. So, are you getting the name of each person? Let's say I have someone at my home now and they're going to be there supposedly indefinitely. You will have the name of that person, so you will know, because maybe two years down the line, I may get someone else that becomes, you know, how do you keep up with who's there? Uh, you know, and will you have the names of those persons on the membership?
All memberships have names.
Names.
Okay, they have a name.
Yes.
So, and they, and they won't be able to flip back and forth and change it? Okay, okay.
Every year, there's a new, new form.
A new form, okay. So, if that person changes, that, that'll be okay. It's interesting. I, I, I like it. You've eliminated some things. Um, like you said, just need to really take it and read it and go over it and mark it up prior to, um, you know. But interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, just one other comment, um, to Bill's point. The things that have been eliminated by this, the things that would be eliminated by this verbiage, were all backroom deals that were never within the, the guidelines to start with. And there were a bunch of them that the board discovered and cleaned up. So, to say we're eliminating the father, daughter thing, again, the father, daughter thing was never intended to be part of it by definition. It was a backroom deal.
It was never made. It was a request.
It was a request, I'm sorry.
It was a request and the request was denied.
Okay, I'm sorry. That was only a request and we didn't do it. Okay, I beg your pardon. But the two sisters was another backroom deal that didn't fit the definition.
I, I guess the thing is, we, we don't have those situations anymore at this point in time, so that, that's good news. Uh, and now, moving forward, we won't have to worry about this
Right.
by, by coming up with this definition. And then, there won't be any confusion. People won't say, well, I, that was my understanding. They'll be able to look at this and they'll be able to say, this is what it consists of, period.
Is this about this, Jim? Okay.
Not blood related is something we left in there. Yes, that's true.
Oh, we have an attorney here. Maybe he can help us with this. We're paying him.
I think most sisters are blood related and, you know, and, you know, if we want to start talking about sisters that are from adopted parents or crazy stuff like that, I mean, we could be here forever.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm wondering.
And we've already said we're going to change the name from family to something else?
Yeah.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, let's, uh, move on to, just try to get through this.
Let's move quick.
Can I ask David a question? Is there a way that we can keep
Full membership.
everything we've talked about and have the intention that the person's a significant partner in residence? So, in other words, right now, based on this discussion, I feel like we're adding that two friends can come down and live together without a relationship based on the discussion.
Correct.
And that's not, in my mind, that's never been the intent. That two friends without a relationship. So, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to get clarification.
Yeah, and, and the way I'm understanding is, it's not the district's business as to what sort of relationship you have. And so, if people, two people are living under the same roof, they're not blood related and they're residing together for an indefinite period of time, then they're, they're going to qualify this. And I think a good word to use may be household membership. And just call it a household membership. And there, because that's what it's going to be, that's the primary condition, is that they're living under the same roof.
How we can eliminate the two friends?
Yeah, just so we don't get in trouble, Dave. That's all we care about and we're fair, so, you know.
Yeah, I was going to say, why can't we say full yearly membership or something like that? I mean, I don't know. I'm just tossing it out there. See if it sticks. Like a full, full yearly membership. I know somebody's going to come up and say, well, what about the seasonal memberships? Go ahead, something say. You know, can we move on to the next?
Yes, it's, it's, it's trying to get this-
See if we can get, yeah. I mean, I know, I know this isn't an easy thing and we don't want to rubber stamp it, but, but, you know.
So, does anybody have a, yeah, does anybody have a question on the other memberships? Because I, I think they're pretty-
The second one down, we have to change now.
Okay.
Where it says, single slash family memberships. Since we can't say it above, we have to change it here as well.
Single, full yearly? Single?
Full membership, I-
Full.
Full?
Full.
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 Okay.
I like that. Making progress here. Okay.
Uh, then the next line, seasonal memberships?
That's one page.
Looks good to me.
Summer memberships?
Looks good to me.
Junior memberships?
Yep.
Executive memberships for single and family?
Uh, family will change, right?
Single and full?
Youth membership?
Youth memberships that do not fall under the full membership?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Corporate memberships?
Okay. That's the...
That's fine, but the next one...
That's the one that's approved thus far.
The next, on the next page, that line's gotta go.
Can we back up a second?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Have we messed up by having children up to 18? Shouldn't we put in there, unless they're a full-time student? Because you know, a lot of times you got kids that are full-time students that still live with their parents. And they should probably be part of the membership.
I don't have a problem with that suggestion. I mean, if everybody else is in agreement with it.
I'd be fine with that.
If you have a student under 18 or 18 that's college student, let's say, living home, they might be in their 20s or 30s, and some people 40s.
Okay, I'm good.
On corporate memberships, real quick, just my question, because I, maybe I have understood, misunderstood in the past about the numbers. It says, says four individuals, so is that, is the intent for a corporate membership to be the, the corporate members are all, are defined as specific people?
True.
As opposed to any members or anybody the corporation designates that wants to allow to play and playing?
My, my feeling was what I, okay, that would be any four people, because it's higher than, it's higher than, than normal. It's $10,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what we're giving them the right to do is bring four people.
It was any four.
And then let's, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are all going to, these require board approval?
Yes.
Yes.
So then my recommendation would be to just take out four and put a specific number of people? Because in corporations, if it sees four, they're like, "I'm not gonna pay, you know, $10,000 if it's only four people." But if they say, "I'm gonna, I can go into, before the board, I'm gonna say, 'Look, here's the, here's the list of people that we want to have access to it,'" and then the board can decide as to whether or not they're going to allow that. So just like a specific number of people that the board would then be able to approve.
I thought, I thought we said up to four people, period.
We actually did say up to four people.
And I don't think you wanna...
That's, I guess that's my question, is it, is it a specific, four specific people?
I don't think it can, I don't think it can be, because nobody's gonna buy a corporate membership if they can't use it to bring guests.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think that's... I don't know if I have the minutes to that, but...
So you want the four, take it out? You want the four person?
Well, I mean, if we could, we can say that it could be four people at a time. You know, if it's, you know, if, if that's what it is, is a foursome is gonna be allowed to play. But the, the question then becomes is, you know, we, as we've stated in the past, all memberships have a name. So the question is, is how are those people gonna be identified? Because if we're identifying it as four specific people, then, you know, obviously, no guests are then allowed.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to switch this, or take a, if we even want to worry about it this time, you know, we can, since they all have to come before the board.
I think up to four people at a time.
Yeah.
Would be just fine.
Okay.
I don't know why we don't just eliminate it. You're not gonna ever get anybody to do it anyway, so...
Okay, Jim, keep going.
So, you know, then it's just verbiage, when you join the club, you get the benefits of our other amenities?
We gotta take that first line out, right? The first line on the page gotta come out.
TBD, yes, that's, that's striked, stricken.
Next line is, when we join the club, you get the amenities of part of your membership at no additional fee. Then it would say for a full membership?
Can I, can I go back to that line?
Yes.
Should we not, we're gonna be putting in, what are we putting in this year? Bocce?
Yeah.
Or shuffleboard?
Bocce and shuffleboard.
If we're putting those in, let's get it in here now? If they're gonna be available sometime this year?
It's all gonna be in the racket club? So you have to have a membership to the racket club? Which racket, racket club is included in that?
The racket club?
Yeah, I, I think, in this definition, all we did is we spelled, we did spell out, you know, the tennis and the pickleball, even though it's part of the racket ball. So I think what he might be implying is to add those two extra words in there.
Yeah, they're gonna be this year, or in the next six months, we should, we're gonna add those in? Okay, okay.
You could put all amenities, but then that doesn't, people don't know what all amenities are. Some people will say, some people don't even know you have pickleball. It's amazing. Yeah, exactly. They say, "What is pickleball? Where are the courts?" You drive by them every day.
So we're gonna add those?
Bocce.
Bocce and shuffleboard.
Shuffleboard.
Okay.
Get someone on the hook to build them. Okay.
So I would say the, the next one would be for, and just scratch, family. For a membership to qualify for age-restricted discount, either of the primary members, member and spouse, or member and significant partner in residence must meet the ma, age restriction of the membership. Does that work if we just strike family?
I think you need to substitute for, because you're not gonna give them a discount for a three-month. Do you? Or do you?
No.
I don't know. So you need to put full.
I think the word "family" needs to be replaced by the word "full" any place it appears.
Mm-hmm. We can do a global replace on that.
And then, so a single just qualifies because it's implied? Because we give single memberships discounts too, when they turn 80 and 85 and 90?
Yep.
Membership refunds, I, I think I need to put something together to submit that to the board.
Yeah.
What would you be thinking of?
Well, specifically, if someone joins and doesn't exercise their membership, and then becomes ill to the point that they can't use the club again. So, like, we had a situation today where, or this year, where someone inked a check, and then, you know, to join, never played golf, you know, fell in the shower and broke their hip, and they're not ever gonna return to golf. So...
What do we do in the case of death? Anything?
In the case of death, and we could put that in there, it's outlined, it matters how long they were a member. Up to 90 days, it's a prorated refund. After 90 days, there isn't a refund. And we could, we should add, we can add that to this document, but it's not in there.
No, it's not in this document.
So we can, we gotta add something about it, I would think.
So in case, in case of death, up to 90 days, it's a prorated refund?
Yeah.
And after 90 days, there's no refund? Well, that's the policy now, we can change it.
What, did you think I was gonna say something?
No.
I personally think somebody dies, you give them back the money, but that's, that would be my point of view on that subject.
That's right, it's up for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, some...
Like, I don't think, I...
I don't know, it's just a lot of extra, you could maybe make it four months, but after a while, it's a... I, you know, I, when I got hurt, or went up north, or somebody died, where I played golf, that never come up, you're just over with. But in other places, like here, they want, they get hurt, they want money back, and they, you know.
We're talking death, we're talking a death versus a medical...
I definitely understand Ray's point. The only, the only exception I see, or when you look at it, is that we don't have 12 equal months, so...
Right, but the other thing is, I would give it back prorated, obviously.
Sure.
So I mean, if they pass away four months into, into it, you give them eight months' worth back.
Sure.
You know, if it's off a couple of bucks, it's not the end of the world.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm not sure where we are with that.
Yeah, we just need to come up with a, do we want to prorate the whole year, or?
What do you think, Dan? What do you think?
I don't care. You know, I, I don't think it's, to be fair, it ought to be prorated. If it's less, I'd say if you got more than six months, that's the way I'd go at it.
Right. So up to six months, it's prorated, and then after...
That's what I was thinking, yeah. That's pretty generous, really.
So, so are we going to amend this to say it's prorated up to six months?
Basically, you're talking about November, December, and then the four months of the year, so you've got basically the whole season. You're all the way, if, if you're talking about if it's a six-month deal event, you've already got basically the whole season, and that's the reason I say that. After that, I don't think I'd refund anything.
But again, that only applies to year-round memberships.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, are we saying up to six months? That's all up to...
So if we were to write it up, if Jim's to write it up, in the event of a death of a family member, or a full member, it would be prorated for six months, they would get a refund. Is that pretty much, okay, great?
And then, so membership refunds is more, is a more difficult situation, so, or maybe it's not. So someone's started their membership, and then they become incapacitated, where they're not going to, you know, play golf again. Basically, the leave of absence is in place for people who are going to play golf again. For people who aren't going to play golf again, I believe in the, we haven't had this happen very often, once the membership's been excised. So I, like, right now, if somebody came to me at 100 days and that happened, I, I would refer it to the board. But we can come up with a policy to try to cover the different periods of days.
I don't know why you wouldn't apply the same policy. We don't, I mean, you know, six months.
Yeah, right. So then, in a way, well, and we'll see how that, because basically, we had put the leave of absences in place to work, to work in place of the refund. Because the, the idea of the leave of absence was when someone got injured, you didn't give them their money back, but you gave them a credit towards the next year's membership. This one with, with a membership refund, you know, I'd rather, everybody's gonna rather have the cash than the credit. So, pretty much, somebody, you know, somebody gets injured two months in, you're gonna give them 10 months back, as opposed to, as opposed to giving them 10 months' credit towards the next membership.
Only if they're permanently disabled.
Yeah. Okay, so this is for permanently disabled?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's not to replace, I don't think it's, it's not there to replace the medical leave, where somebody's going to be gone for two or three months, and then you roll that over to the next year.
Well, I don't know what purpose that serves, since we don't have an initiation fee. I've never seen a leave of absence policy, and of course, it didn't have an initiation fee. I mean, I'm sure that was put in there, so that if I had to take a year off for health reasons, I wouldn't have to repay the initiation fee that I had paid before. But we don't have one, haven't had one in almost 10 years, and probably never will, so... Whether it's really a leave of absence, or it's some other form of, of, uh, membership refund, if you will, I'm not sure those two things can't be combined into one.
Well, I think a medical leave of absence applies to, if you, if you've had, let's say you've joined in October, and January, something happens, and you are out for a period of time. You're not gonna be able to play for two or three months. I think, you correct me if I'm, I mean, that's the way I would interpret the medical leave of absence.
And if that's the case, I don't think it should involve any refund or credit.
A medical leave, so there should be no medical leave, is what you're saying?
I don't know what purpose it serves. If you're gonna be out the balance of the season, you haven't been a member six months, we've dealt with that. Why do we need a second set of criteria to deal with medical issues, when we don't have an initiation fee?
It's a good question. I...
I don't know.
I, I think the idea is, well, one, one of the ways it does work is, you know, someone comes in, and it's October, and they're iffy with their shoulder. They don't know if they're gonna need surgery, which would be, you know, six months out or not. You know, now they join with the reassurance that if they need a surgery in December, and they miss December to June, that, that six months, they'll get credited to the next year. If we don't do it this way, then, then you're gonna have that person, which is okay, but you're gonna make them make a decision, you know, based on whether, whether they want to join or not, and still lose that time. But I understand your point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess they, if they're gonna be out from December through June, you know, then they, I, I don't know, I just think you're, you're just creating a whole lot of situations where you're gonna be calculating refunds, and calculating credits, and doing all this other stuff.
Oh, that's, yes, that's what we do now, what I was guessing.
I think we have a nice, well-defined, easily managed definition up above, and I'm not sure we should go any further than that. That's just my opinion.
We would be taking this away from the membership if we did it.
Correct.
Are we talking about the leave of absence now? Is that where we are?
We, we kinda tied it into the, the membership.
The leave of absence? You're, you're saying we don't need that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what purpose it serves.
Well, let's see, for the guy who has back surgery in September, and can't play for three or four months, but joins and gets prorated the following year, that's part of the policy?
Plus its revenue.
Which is exactly what I did. Work, I mean, you know, was I happy to have to pay for three months that I wasn't playing? No, but I understood that was the policy. And then that was prorated the following year. I thought it was okay, except that we have, if we were to keep it as it is, I didn't know you had to bring a doctor's note back to play again. So we would have to add that in. Huh? I had to have a doctor's note to take the surgery.
No, 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 what I'm saying, get that credit for the next year.
Yeah, no, I was fine with it. I mean, that's, that's a personal story.
It's, it's a one-time thing, as it's written today. It's a one-time occurrence, and when, none of us are getting younger. So there's, there's a higher probability we might need that time more than once. So it's kind of a little bit of a perk.
I don't know.
I think we should leave that alone, personally.
The leave of absence? I, I, I agree with you on that one. I, but here again, yeah, the one-time leave of absence is prorated to the follow, not prorated, but it's carried over to the following year as a credit.
And that verbiage needs to be included.
Hmm?
And that verbiage needs to be included there.
Oh, what, one time?
Yeah, the, the credit part.
It is under the leave of absence medical.
Yeah. It does, yeah. It says, this is a one-time leave of absence per membership.
Oh, you mean to spell it out, that the credit's the following year? We can put that in. I think what he's saying is just explain it a little bit more detail, what the leave of absence, for medical reasons, actually is. How it works.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if it involves a credit or a refund, it should say that under leave of absence, and it doesn't.
So we would add, the prorated cost of the time missed will be applied to a membership the following, or in the future?
Mm-hmm.
That's better than missing. I guess the other thing is, what constitutes an exception that needs to be approved by the board?
I guess if it's more than one time?
Yeah. It, yeah. It, it can be brought to the board, and if the board accepts it, fine. If they don't, yeah.
Okay, so is everybody okay with moving on to dues payment options?
Jumping back up, yeah.
Can we, where are we now?
We're backing up for a second, up to the dues payment option.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So there's a 2.3% discount for writing, for paying with cash or a check. There's two options, a payment. Option one is to pay your full membership in full. Option two is to pay basically October 1st, and then again, pay half on October 1st, and then have the other half filled to your account on January 1, being due January 31st?
I'm sorry, I, I have no problem with that.
I, I will just tell you this, for your own information, what you have here is fine, as far as I'm concerned, but that last line is not happening.
Yeah. Yeah.
If we have not received payment by that day, we'll automatically bill your credit card on file, the remaining portion of your dues. That doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think we should strike that. I agree.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
Why would we strike that? Why would we just not do it?
You guys don't do it.
Yeah, what he's saying is,
You don't do it.
At the end of the month, if somebody isn't paid up, um, sounds like somebody's experienced that in the past.
The guy who had the back surgery, I think, I think I let it go till about February 20th last year, just out of curiosity, to see what would happen. And nothing happened, so I finally had to come in here and pay it myself.
And that's what, that's what everybody, that's why we're doing this.
Sure. Don't put things in there you aren't gonna do. Period.
I mean, this is, this is actual verbiage that came right off of, uh, the document. This is not new.
No, no, I understand. Well, the reason I thought we should strike it, and David, I, I just don't know that we can legally, can we legally do that?
Yeah, they sign a piece of paper.
They sign a piece of paper?
Yeah, we sign the application, it's part of the application.
So we just leave it, we just need to do it?
Yeah.
Exactly. Uh, membership upgrades, I would say, right now, the policy in place is a membership can be upgraded at any time by paying the difference in the cost of the memberships. So if, if somebody took out, came in October 1st, and took out a five-month membership for $2,300, and at any time during that five months, they wanted to turn it into a single membership for $3,200 for the whole year, they can just pay the $900 difference. Or on any membership for that case.
I like that.
Initiation fee, currently, the initiation fee's been waived.
Why don't we just take that?
Is that there, in case we ever start it again? That was my question.
Uh, well, I believe that's there, because we've kept the initiation fee on the rate sheet. So since it's on the rate sheet, then we, then need to say, if we take it off the rate sheet, then we could take it out of here, but.
Do we leave it on the rate sheet, just because we might wanna bring that back? Or, why, why do we even do that?
We left it on the rate sheet, uh, under the budget discussion, we left it there, that it was like an impetus to make people join.
And they put it, they put it back in place in '09, which was the first year I had property here, and, um, they, part, way through the season, they took it back off, because people were so violently
Sure.
against it. In fact, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there were a couple people that got partial refunds on their initiation fee, and if, if you didn't, it's probably because you didn't ask, I don't know. I could be wrong about that.
So, the leave of absence, I believe we've altered it. There is a after where it says there's a one-time leave of absence per membership. The prorated amount for the time missed will be applied to a future mem- to a membership in the future.
Yes.
Is added. Uh, booking of tee times, I'm gonna let everybody read through that, and see if they have any, I mean, that, that's our standard policy now.
My, my only question there, Jim, is that, I've had people come to me on, three weeks to the day ahead of time, to ask for tee times, and were told that they were full. And they said, it can't be full, because nobody can do it till 21 days.
Uh, that
So that's all I, you know.
No, well, the things that are booked in, ahead of 21 days, are, tournaments are booked ahead of 21 days, and hotels are booked ahead of 21 days.
If you've got, if you've got a day out there that's completely booked, and no member's gonna be able to get a tee time, there ought to be an announcement to that effect.
But I don't think that was the case.
And I don't think that was the case either.
No, it just, stuff like that happens, and that, I don't mind us having that, but I, I think if I call at 8 o'clock, 21 days ahead of time, I ought to be able to get a tee time.
For a point of simplicity, are we talking about a time before I was here? Because I, I do want to indicate, since I've come here, it is different.
Yeah, I, I
And so I believe this is a time before I was here. Or it was never brought to my attention.
I'm not sure where it was, but I know it's happened several times.
I'm sure it was before I was here.
I have, I haven't experienced it, so.
And that could very well be.
Because I do wanna draw a line in the sand, when we actually stop, or use other people's names, Dave, Ron, we know all these names, let's just make it specific, when Dave was here, when Ron was here. Um, it, it isn't happening when Jim's here.
It just, these are kind of the reasons why we're going through this, because that's, it's been told to several people that they, there's no tee times available. Well, that's impossible.
No, the only way that it can happen is like Florida Hospital, when they come and tie up two courses, or.
We're on page three already.
Yes.
We're moving.
So tee times, uh.
Hopefully, the people have read this, so when we get to booking tee times, is there any questions on booking tee times?
Yes, of course I have a question.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Where you say, uh, failure to resolve, failure, I'm sorry, failure to check in will result in the possibility of losing your starting time for that day, that's fine, but the penalty, uh, I'm sorry, I lost where I was.
Yep.
Oh, failure to cancel your tee times result in automatic member guest charge to your account for all missed tee times. Or missed tee, yeah, missed tee times. Then it said, times could result in losing your advanced booking. I'm okay with the advanced booking part, but I'm not so sure I'm okay with, if somebody forgets to cancel their tee times, charging them for four people, or two people, or whatever.
I don't, it's whatever these people, so.
I, I think that when you book it from the outside, if somebody fails to show up and call and cancel, then they should get charged.
Well, I'm, I'm really talking more about members.
So the, I'm just guessing, looking back, the, the intent of this would be, since there's no cost to a member to book a tee time, I guess, or anybody, uh, that if someone continually failed to cancel their tee times, that they would withdraw that privilege. So I, I would agree, you can take the money out of it, it's just continued failure to cancel your tee times, I would even take away could, I'd say will result in losing your advanced booking privileges.
You can leave that line in, if, to Mark's point, if you wanna leave a guest.
Right.
You know, if a guest makes a, a tee time from the out, that, to me, is from the outside, that's fine, but a member, I don't think we charge them. So maybe just take the word member out.
Right. And I understand that, I just don't want to imply we don't take prepayment, so when, when you have someone, if they book a tee time, and then they don't show up, you don't really have a way to charge them.
No, that's what I'm saying, leave the word guested. It says, it says, failure to cancel your tee times result in automatic member guest charge, so just take the member out of it, so it's a guest charge, which would refer, in my opinion, to the people from outside. I don't wanna charge members, I don't want anybody to think they're gonna get charged, that's basically, who's a member here?
Okay. And all I'm asking is, how do we charge them? Since they haven't given us a credit card, or, I don't wanna imply that we can do something that we can't.
I don't know, I, I don't know how you take reservations, do you take credit cards when you take reservations?
No, we don't. It's not standard in the area.
You need to take the credit cards and take it out.
Is everybody okay with just, uh, getting rid of the final two lines? Uh, dress code?
Uh, Jim, let me interrupt you a minute. Guys, I, I'd kinda like to go to like page five, the end of page five, and then, I know Mark has a schedule here, but, uh, maybe finish it at the next meeting, go through the rest of it, uh, because the meetings, it's getting kinda long now, and I don't wanna lose our valuable people out here, so.
Well, hopefully, people have kind of, uh, reviewed this.
We get to five, that's half, almost halfway done?
Yeah, I
Is that, is that okay with you guys?
Whatever we wanna do, the, to me, the major policies that are beyond the wordsmithing, as far as just changing, uh, is the dress code and the handicap flags, those are the, kind of, the two primary policies. But we can do it any way we want.
We were moving along pretty good, I, well, for a second there. All I'm, I guess I would suggest is, does anybody have, at, at least on the board here, anybody made any, in dress code, for an example, are there any concerns or comments on the dress code? If there aren't any,
No.
And Jim has none, then we can rubber stamp that.
I think Dan's got one.
I got a bunch of them.
Okay.
I don't know why you wanna specifically go in and say, you can't do this, and you can't do that, I don't know why you don't just say, proper golf attire is required, and be done with it.
I would tend to agree with you on that, other than I saw people out there with tank tops the other day, and
Well, that's not proper golf attire, and that belongs to the pro shop for letting them out there.
And
These are essentially never been enforced.
Right.
You know, we say no jeans, but what we do in the pro shop, I think, is tell people you can't wear jeans here, so next time, don't, but we don't have any clue whether they don't or do the next time, because we don't know who they are. You've got an antiquated rule in there, it says your shirt has to be tucked in, we got a lot of members don't tuck their shirts in anymore, and we're gonna, we're not gonna enforce that rule, so take it out. You know, just, soft spikes, I think, are important, and, and proper golf attire, I think, fits the need.
That might be the best, because I, I don't think we're gonna enforce whatever we put in there, so.
Well, proper golf attire could mean anything to anybody.
Yeah.
Anything to anybody can mean proper golf attire.
And I, I talked to Tanya the other day about it, uh, I mean, we saw guys out there without shirts on. Called, called the pro shop, they went out and told them to put them back on, they put them back on. The pro shop people left, they took them back off. I mean, that's, I, I mean, it, it's just like our code enforcement, it's anything else.
Give them, give them their $33 back, and say, thank you very much.
I was gonna say, if you called, if you called, yeah, if you called back, yeah, if they took their shirts back off, we should've went out and escorted them off the course. I wouldn't have even given them the money back.
The lady that complained said, she just started laughing, said, I'm not gonna call them again, but, you know, I, I guess everybody's doing their job, but it's, it's just like what we're talking about, if, if we have rules, somehow, again, we gotta
Sure, I agree.
The more rules we have, it's the more things that get broke.
Well, yeah, and the dress code is a different, is a difficult issue, because all golf courses are relaxing their dress codes, um, specifically, like, a municipal course would have the most relaxed dress code to include as many people to play as possible. That's difficult, because we're trying to build an image, and, so those, those things are, are in conflict. But I think the idea is to present the fact that we, I think proper golf attire handles it. But we just, yeah, it really is the point, whether you're just gonna send, you know, if somebody has jeans on, are you gonna send them away, or are you just gonna tell them not to wear them again in the future? And then there is gonna be the chance they're gonna wear them again, or do you just accept the jeans?
Again, I'd say proper golf attire. I mean, we got some of these player advantage guys that wear two shirts, so they can take one on off, because they sweat through both of them, and then he takes the third one off, so, he's out there, not completely naked, but a lot more than I wanted to see.
Yeah, I think we have a reputation for being a little lax, in terms of enforcing the rules, anyway. You know, we don't monitor pace of play unless somebody calls and complains, we don't have marshals out there, if you will, so, uh, I think our, our reputation is that we're probably as lax as anybody, even though we're a lot higher quality organization than most of our competitors, um, that's one place where we don't enforce much.
And, and I agree with what you're saying.
I agree. When we lost the Rangers, we lost control.
Yeah, we, we have lost that, but to eliminate that, and have really not some kind of guidelines, whether they're enforced or not, if you don't have them in there, they will automatically not, people will not adhere to certain things. At least if they see this, they might say, well, you know, I'm not supposed to be wearing a tank top, you know? But then if they do wear the tank top, you know, if it's not gonna be enforced, that's a, you know, it's a catch 22, I think.
Well, I think it's easy to apply strict rules, but it's gonna cost you money, you're gonna have less people, you're gonna have less people play.
Well, we don't wanna cost, we don't wanna cost the district money, I mean, we don't wanna lose revenue, so, maybe we should just allow anything. I, I just don't want anybody, I don't want anybody to come up to me when I'm wearing a tank top.
I agree.
And scare them. But, I don't want anybody to come up to me and say, you can't be dressed like that, because I'm, the first thing I'm gonna say is, where does it say that I can't wear a tank top? Or where does it say I can't wear cutoff jeans?
So I
Just to barge in real quick, if, I don't have a problem with proper golf attire, but we need, if we're gonna use those words, we should probably have some sort of a definition that goes along with it, you know, this is acceptable, this is not, and, and then just put some sort of blanket statement there, you know, failure to abide by this may result in removal from the course, and you will not be refunded your money, and just flat-out state it up front. Because, like I say, if, if people are out there, they're breaking the dress code, but it's not bothering anybody, no problem, but if it's causing issues, where people are calling, and feel the need to call in and complain and say, hey, this is affecting my experience as these people are breaking the dress code, I think they should, you should be able to remove them.
Can you do that, Jim?
Yes, and I, we'll get you a dress code, I think the point is, the dress code needs to be black and white. This is accepted, this isn't.
And I think this is, I think this came directly from you guys, so you're gonna revise it, I would
Yes.
What, what's wrong with what we got on this paper?
I don't know.
I mean, I, I'm getting really confused. What's wrong with what's on the paper now?
What's wrong with what's, well, basically, uh, we, we discourage jeans now, but we allow them, uh, and like Joe said, it doesn't matter, the tucked-in part isn't something that we enforce. Men's shirts, we don't, uh,
You don't require
I don't know, uh, yeah, we don't require coll, we don't require collars.
So just add moxing. That'll take care of that. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with what we got, what, I don't know what, and jeans, I, you know, it's your call, but I think jeans should not be on the golf course at all, I don't care who it is. Those people I would throw off. If we're taking that much, that many people who's wearing jeans, it's gonna affect our bottom line, we gotta do a whole bunch of marketing.
Well, people are just, I, I mean, golf courses are adding jeans to be acceptable, instead of taking them away, but, but we can certainly do that.
I, I'm not ready to add them yet.
They're already out there.
Yeah, I mean, you got jeans out there every day, almost, especially when it's cool.
Oh, they're here, but, you know, the question is, it's like the Tuesday Night League, I don't know how many of the, the local players come in jeans that come straight from work. If you, if you make them not wear jeans, you know, are they still gonna play or not? That's, you know, that's not the
The decision is, are we gonna enforce it, or are we gonna take it out?
Correct.
I just would assume, if, if we're not gonna force it, take it out. I mean, it's not my likes or dislikes, it's whether you're gonna enforce it.
Oh, if you leave it in there, we'll enforce it. I mean, before they sign up for the Tuesday Night League, I'm gonna tell them they're not, you know, they're gonna know they're not playing without jeans, but it will affect your sign up. I mean, this is gonna
Give a discount in the shop.
I think jeans are the wrong issue. I, I agree with Ray, I don't like the idea of people being able to come here in jeans, but they're gonna repeatedly come here, and they aren't gonna buy $40, $50 pants to meet our criteria, so, putting jeans in there as a, as an acceptable attire, I'm okay with, but if you have the jeans with holes in them, and the cutoff jeans, and all those other things, um, and, and we accept that, I think we're way left of center. So, um, again, put enforceable rules in there, and commit to enforce them in the pro shop, and I think we're as good as we're gonna get.
Okay, we'll do that, and bring that back.
So the only thing on the dress code is the jeans, that's the only issue we got? Otherwise, the rest of it, the way it is, is okay?
And collars.
Yeah.
Oh, and the collars, add, add moxes.
And the tucked, and I think in the tucked-in, other than that, it's, it works. Well, how do you enforce that? You know, if we're trying enforceability.
We accept tee shirts, basically, as long as they don't have offensive, and I know that's been put out there.
Moving right along, pace of play. Any questions on this?
No. I think the only change
Remove the Ranger, because there isn't one ever. I think they should remove the Ranger, because there isn't one ever. If you should encounter a slow pace of play, please notify the golf shop by phone or the nearest Ranger.
Okay. So, golf shop or starter?
So, we don't have one.
Yeah, I, I would say that, yeah. Stop it right, just notify the golf shop by phone and then scratch the rest of it.
I would.
Sounds good to me.
What was that? Probably lost there. Only if you shoot in Canada. Right. Yeah, no, probably not. You know, if you want to get rid of the other three points, you just say the average pace of play is, you know, put four hours and thirty minutes, whatever you guys quote. That's probably solvable over the rest of it. Pace of play is expected to be four hours and twenty minutes on both courses, or whatever the number is.
I guess, to me, the silence with pace of play is that we...
Don't do it. That's fine.
Yeah. Well, we just have a very, what we strive for during the summer is very different than what we strive for during, during the winter.
During the summer, there's no problems anywhere.
Driving range. Any questions on the driving range operation as it's written?
We got golf carts or automobiles prohibited in there. There's all, there's two more, twice appears on page nine as well, which is kind of redundant as well as ignorant. I mean, I can't imagine anybody driving their golf cart or their car up on the driving range, but I know what happens.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
We've got so many.
We have people.
Well, they ought to be asked to leave.
I mean, we could scratch it. I'm, like I said, it's not my...
No, it ought to be on there, but I think it only needs to be on there once.
I think under, I think it's two different headings. I think that might have been why it was there. One was under the driving range policy and one was actually under the golf cart or the private cart agreement, I think.
You're correct.
Right. And I, so there were just two separate documents with the same wording, just to reiterate. But I don't, I have no preference one way or another. It wasn't my...
I don't care where you put it. It needs to be there, but there should be some penalty for having done so.
Anybody else have anything to say on the driving range policy?
Yeah, driving range policy, number two, all range balls and equipment shall not leave the golf course. If they do, what happens?
Yeah, good luck on that one.
Yeah, I mean...
We're just buying more balls and more buckets.
I mean, I'd love to see a way to enforce that, because people, obviously, I mean, we have thirty buckets one day and the next day we got twelve.
Right.
I mean, you know, there's lots of balls and there aren't any balls. But if you can't come up with a way to enforce it, I'd take it out.
I think my view on this is, you're right about enforcing. If you don't have a way to enforce it, but if you don't have it in there, it leaves it up to the people to say, "Well, I didn't know I couldn't do that."
Well, you got, you got members taking them home and bringing half of them back the next day, because they don't want to hit a whole bucket. But you also got outside people taking them forever, so it's two separate issues.
Okay, leave it. I'm good.
Next, next cameras.
And our golf policies for the driving range operation. That's kind of a new piece, I guess. I don't remember seeing that before. What do you think, Jim?
Well, it's new, I guess, safety precautions, signs. I mean, I definitely think we should maintain the areas in the mats. Yardage indicators, I guess we haven't done that to this point. That's something we could look to, to add.
Are we gonna put flags back on those poles?
Yes. Should happen. I have no idea why they're not on there.
Okay.
Okay. You know, it would be nice, and I don't know how you do it, I can swing up the subject for a minute. Not everybody goes to the range with those, with the guns that you, that you can get distance on. It'd be nice, I know there's a plaque there someplace, or there used to be a flag, that gave distances to the pins. It would be nice, maybe, to have two or three of those where everybody could see them.
We used to have it.
Well, I don't know if we still have, I don't even know if they're still out there. I can't find one.
I'll look into that, yes.
That, that, I think that would be good for everybody.
Yeah, they need to be in the same place, right in the middle of the range, so people can reference them.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe need two or three. I don't...
Okay. How about inclement weather? Anybody have any discussion on that?
Yeah, I don't know why we don't have inclement weather warning detection system.
Well, that's up to Jim.
I would think we have some potential liability if we don't.
I, I think that, well, I think the primary reason is that there's actually been more suits if you have the system than if you don't. And, and then there's the extra cost of the system.
So, if you leave it to the discretion of the people, they're at fault versus if...
Blame it on their own risk. They're at fault in their risk.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense. The advantage card and the play card is a standard.
Perfect. But just so we don't, we're, right now, we're, I'm not intending to add signs and indicating safety procedures for all patrons over there, so I'll scratch that.
Scratch that. Sounds good to me.
Inclement weather, okay, play cards.
Let's go through the handicap at least, okay?
What's this?
Ah, gee.
What? No, on the handicap, Jim and I were in a meeting with the golf committee the other day, and they came up with a recommendation on reward, actually, Andy did this, how to, paragraph where it starts with cost must be kept to a minimum. They came up with a recommendation that I typed up that they would like to see in there, and I think it does spell it out much better. So... Did you guys get that? It's only a little thing.
Got it, okay. Very perfect, yes.
So, it'd just be take it out from one paragraph with this one in if you guys agree. So, kind of like...
That's fine with me.
So, Jimmy, you can put that in if you're, are you guys all right? Dan, you're okay?
Joe?
The other thing on the handicap thing, number two, the word "guest," do we actually ask the guest for proof of...
I think you ought to eliminate that bona fide proof of handicap under the America's Disabilities Act. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because I don't think we're gonna ask people that.
Right. So, handicap, so the first one, handicaps' flag shall be assigned to members when the following requirements are confirmed.
I don't think we're gonna ask the guest for any of that stuff, right? Or you want the whole thing out?
I...
So, in other words, right, right now, they require, right now, we require a note from a doctor to get a handicap...
Okay.
...flag. So, that could really just state that, state that members are required to produce a note from a doctor to...
So, you require the third thing down, the third dot down? That's what you require?
Physician's letter.
Correct. Yes, the number two.
So, then I would take the second one out totally?
Take the second one out totally?
Well, that's a temporary thing, according to the third one. Individual has temporary disability, not permanent. In other words, when, when I had my knee done, I could get a temporary flag, then, then went away, just like I had a temporary tag for my car.
Well, you're saying, take the word temporary out, right?
I'm not sure you don't need both. I mean, some people have permanent disabilities and some people have temporary.
Right. I mean, take it out, so it's all kinds of disabilities. Is that what we're saying? Just leave it to say that individual has disability requiring utilization of such flag?
Right.
Just take it out, and that's it. That should cover it.
I haven't heard for a while, Jim. God bless his soul, Tug, Tug would, he was forced to get, pay fifty bucks for his handicap thing. And he, he made a practice to go around and ask, "Where'd you get that handicap thing?" And they said, "I just bought it, put it on my cart." So, do we have a way of, when we see a handicapped cart, know that they paid the fifty bucks and went through the, because a lot of people just buy those blue flags and put them on their cart. And that used to make Tug really mad, because he said, "You're making me pay fifty bucks." And I, I mean, I don't know, again, if that's...
No, well, I would make a note, we should only allow authorized flags. Somebody shouldn't be able to just buy their own flag and declare themselves handicapped.
Right. And that's, well, they're, I think a lot of are handicapped, Jim, but they, they don't want to pay the fifty bucks.
Right.
That's, I'm not, I'm not saying people aren't...
Do we really want to require a physician's letter? I mean, if they have a handicapped driver's license, to me, that's, should be sufficient.
That, yes.
Well, we're talking about taking the second piece out and putting the third one in, and that says you gotta have a letter.
So, we would say a physician's letter or a handicap designation on your driver's license?
Just bona fide proof. I mean, as long as the pro shop staff is satisfied, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Bonafide proof, sounds good.
Which is what the second one says.
And I know a lot of them come in and get, we've seen that, they come in and rent a cart.
They would add it.
And tell them they're handicapped. And I, I don't know if we checked their driver's license, but a lot of times they're just do, disconnect that, that thing and let them play.
Right.
So, that should be looked at, Jim.
So, what we're saying on that third one down, you want to add some, a driver's license? They have to have a, because we have members that I don't think they're back pain or whatever, what, hesitant.
The second one says bona fide proof of handicap, and you're talking about doing away with that one and substituting it for the third one. And I'm, I'm saying you don't really want to do that. You should be able to prove to the pro shop staff that you are, have a bona fide handicap. I'm not, I'm just saying, don't require a physician's letter as your only way of qualifying.
Member, member provides bona fide proof confirmed by staff that individual has a disability requiring utilization of such flag.
Right.
Dick?
Does that license also handle veterans' disability?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever your disability is. Some of us, yeah, but some of us have a mental deficiency too, Bill, you know? So, I'm, I'm thinking about applying for my flag next week.
Are we still going with two different colored flags, Ray? Is that, I mean, is that the recommendation?
Yes. But I, I don't know that it's, are we down that far? Okay, the pro shop keeps the list, that's correct. Cart should be kept to minimum.
Substitute that, substitute this for that.
Okay.
What were you substituting, I'm sorry?
The thing that Ray handed out.
Oh, okay.
Handicap flag policy.
Yeah.
The reason I asked is, there's still talks to blue and yellow flags, but I don't see anything that says what they mean.
Correct.
Yeah, I haven't seen the yellow.
And we need it in there. So, yes, they do have two flags still proposed for blue and yellow. But as you said, it's not in here. So, the, the yellow flags are designed to get you within ten yards of the green. And the blue flags... Was it thirty yards or what?
Actually, I thought it was fifteen and, I thought it was fifteen and five or fifteen and ten.
That was fifteen and ten, and then in certain cases, like LT...
Was five.
It was five.
Okay.
But we weren't gonna mention the five. We were just gonna acknowledge that it would happen.
So, the club reserves the right to allow severe cases to park close to the green?
If possible, could they park in the back of the green? I had two, two cars this weekend, and they were parked two feet off the fourth green. It's irritating. It really is.
I know. But, Bill, wait till we get to you.
Were these, were these public carts? For the public? Bill, were these carts for the public?
They were, they were company carts, and they did not, I could not see a handicap flag on it.
You should have called the office. I mean, that, that would be, yeah, I'm saying, that's, that's my recommendation. You call the pro shop and say, "We've got a problem with carts." They should be able to see the carts on the course, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, they, they should, it should be their responsibility, if you call it in, to fix it.
Okay. Can we move right on to the abuse of the handicap flag policy?
Yes.
Does everybody agree with what's in there or not? Are the comments from what you've read?
First violation, oh, yes.
These were taken out of your existing policies, I believe.
I guess I'm back to the same question. Is there any enforcement here? In, in your tenure, Jim, has any of this beyond step one ever been done?
In my tenure, it hasn't, but it will be. I talked to a member yesterday about it before they went out. So, I mean, that's, that's a, I think that's a purpose that the golf committee can serve, is, is to let us be made aware of people that aren't abiding by the rules, so we can make sure that they're knowledgeable of the rules. But I do, I don't think a four-step policy works. I, I think that's one too many steps. I think three is enough. But the, the way that it's set up now should be that the, the head professional does one and two, and then the GM is responsible for number three.
However you enforce that, you know, it's, that's up to you, how your, your staff, and if you want the head professional to handle one and two and you three, that's an internal thing.
Yep.
Are you suggesting we take out the fourth, Ben?
Yes.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
Agreed.
I think we did take out the blue stake, so you need to remove that one on the fifth one down.
Now, did you say there is a cost for the flag, or is it strictly a replacement flag?
Oh, it's a cost.
There is a cost for a flag now.
For the initial flag?
For the initial flag, yes.
Okay, and if you lose one, there's a cost, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe we should put, we don't have the initial cost in here, though.
I believe it, it says, oh, it doesn't say it, initial cost.
We should put the initial cost in.
Right.
Do you guys mind if we stop here and continue this at the next meeting? Our, our audience has been quite, well, we've lost quite a few.
I don't, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem stopping now or continuing it. Either way...
Is that okay, Tanya?
It's more up to Jim.
Well, it's, it's up to Jim, but Omar and I and David have a conference call we cannot miss at one o'clock, just to let you know.
So, should we go on forward with you, and if the board wishes to continue with Jim? Only because Jim has kind of in his mind, and I'm not trying to put words in, in his mind, have this document finalized in a pretty timely fashion, and right now, we're halfway through it. I'd like to, if you delay it until the eighth of December, we'll be looking at this document probably in February. And if, and if he's acceptable to that, that's fine, too. I don't, I personally...
I, I don't personally mind either way. I just wanted to...
I don't mind.
You think, you're talking about stopping the whole meeting?
No, no, we got other stuff. We got a lot more to go.
We have a lot of things on the agenda.
We got a lot of other stuff to do. We got a lot of other stuff to do.
So, it would make sense to move on, and then when we're done, the board can decide whether to come back at this, you know, continue at this meeting, or whether we address it in the future.
Let's get this done today. We're on page seven of the eleven, my God.
Okay.
I agree, I think we should finish it at the end of the meeting.
It's just for the benefit of Omar and Mike, and the others who have to go to the conference call.
Okay, we're, we're come back to this at the end, okay?
I don't even know what time it is.
Either what?
Eleven fifty.
What time is it, eleven fifty?
Eleven fifty.
Okay, Tanya, add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports? Okay.
I got a couple of things. The new building is, looks like it's going to be right on time. They've really been working really hard on it. And I met with Tanya yesterday, we've had a lot of residents have, have called, they want to go see it, and they've been trying to get in and go look, see it. We won't allow them in. But I think, Tanya and I talked, I think it would be really good to do an open house.
Yeah.
Have the employees there, and also the residents sometime in the, in December. Tanya...
And the board, yeah.
And the board.
Yeah.
I was thinking...
And the board, if you want to come.
The week before Christmas?
That sounds good. You know, we talked before, I mean...
Is that...
We're out of town the week of Christmas.
Week before, so maybe the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, somewhere in there, twenty-first.
So, we'll come up with a date, you know, maybe a week before then, you know, to try to get everybody there?
Would the board be in agreement with a open house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And also, we've been working on the drainage, Drew and I have been working a lot on the drainage specs, and I do have a list here on the order we want to start at. So, I don't know if anybody has a question. Ray, you and I talked about the drainage.
Well, yeah, my question to you is, we all got the drainage report for this year. And I know Mark has brought up several meetings, that we prioritize correctly?
Yes, we have it here, and I have a list for you guys, if you want it, I'll give it to you. You know, hopefully, we can stay on schedule.
I'm sorry, did we need to add anything on, or it was right?
Well, I mean, right now, we have five projects that we want to work on, but there are some, there are, there are other areas since the storm that came up that I see that we should start working on. You know, try to do some more stuff in-house also.
See, that's what I wanted you to do. I mean, you're, you've got to be the lead guy on this.
Okay.
So, the five that we, that we said last year was going to be the five this year, that we're going to do, if that's not right, change it. I mean, I would think we should consider changing them and doing it, doing the ones we have to do.
We're, we're pretty much right on where we want to be. You know, there are other areas we want to look into also. We plan starting sometime in the end of February, when our specs come in and the pricing and all that, because we have to bring that back to the board, but...
If I can, I was also curious, do you have adequate a number of people to do all this stuff?
Well, contractors, we're going to have to contract a lot out. Could I use some more people? Absolutely. I mean, because I would like to, you know, do some handwork and stuff before we go into these areas. And right now, the guys in maintenance do everything here, you know. I mean, I've, since I've taken over, I added a lot of jobs to their jobs. And are we behind? We're absolutely behind, absolutely. We're behind on a lot of things, like, you know, the striping, even trimming and stuff. We're also going to be opening up a new building, that's going to be majored up because for the next month and a half, two months, we're going to be moving everything back over, taking everything down what we've put up. Absolutely, I could, you know, use some more help, you know.
Use somebody to spray Turtle Run, too.
Excuse me?
You could use somebody to spray Turtle Run.
Right. Right, right. And we've got to catch up on that. We're behind on a lot of things, but...
I personally would like to see what, you know, if you would give me something that spells out what you think you need.
Okay.
I'd like to see it.
All right.
We can, I'll share it with these guys.
Okay. And I'll do that, Ray, I'll work with you on it, and, okay.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if we're in a position to do anything.
Like Matanzas, like Matanzas, we want to start our Matanzas, that's our first.
But Supervisor Brooks, the, the projects that he mentioned, all these projects are going to be bid out. These are not projects in-house. So, Matanzas, the culvert replacements, these are all projects that we are bidding out. So, they'll be done by contractors, not, not by internal staff.
Okay. I still like to see what you...
But I think, did, you, you said you had additional items. I'm not, I'm not looking at the document there.
Right.
I'm going to make a bold assumption that those are the same items that we've already approved.
Yes, Mark, right.
Okay. The additional items, are they on there as well? Kind of the wish list items? Or how do we find out about that?
The wish, no, I'll give them to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Or I'll give them to Ray, and then you can go from there, or whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
You know...
So, you've got something now?
For the projects.
Was that just a summary of what we already got?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yes, the items that we're looking into are listed there. That's the list that he has. Because since he said, since the hurricane came up, I know there's some additional areas that we're looking into, we're not real, we can't make a recommendation just yet to the board, but, but they are on that, that piece of paper he has.
Okay, well, I guess my point is, if we're going to spend two hundred and fifty, or whatever it was, three hundred thousand on, on drainage this year, I want to make sure we do it on the right project. So, if I have to, if we have to consider knocking number five off because of what happened due to the hurricane, that we have to add something else on, I'd rather do that.
Yeah, we're, I don't believe we're recommending to not...
Well, we really have to wait until the prices come in, but I don't think we, you know.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Any other staff report?
Yeah, I wanted to give a quick report regarding Hurricane Irma and some of the FEMA costs. We've talked about, you know, golf course debris and debris pickup by the county, but we really haven't got a deep dive into the financials. I provided the board and the residents a report that categorizes all, all the different damages per FEMA categories, along with actual costs and what we estimate to get everything completed. Actual costs to date are about a hundred and fifty, a little bit over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We estimate to spend a hundred and eighty-six more to get everything completed. Some of the projects that we haven't got completed yet are, you know, our Vita Road, that's still waiting for FEMA approval to go through. Debris, the golf course debris, we still have TWQ doing work, they haven't completed that work yet. The building roofs, we're still getting quotes and waiting for FEMA to get back on that. And then the last one is a stormwater drain at Unit 23 that's gone, and that's been damaged and we need a repair. So, there's about four projects outstanding. Golf course debris should be done pretty quickly. Yeah, ninety percent done. FEMA reimbursement is typically seventy-five percent, which I explained in that email yesterday. And there are some categories where FEMA has determined to give a little bit more percentage based off timeframes. So, for category B, which is emergency work, and this is kind of tricky wording, it's not really, everything's an emergency in a hurricane, but this only is for, example, our Vita Road, when that collapsed, if Mike sent two guys out there to put cones, that's considered an emergency. The travel time for them, the amount of time they use the equipment, the cones they put out, that is emergency procedures to mitigate that, that damage or that threat. Actually repairing the road is a completely separate category and not emergency. So, like fuel, water, generators, that all falls into category B, and for the first thirty days, any invoices in that timeframe will be reimbursed at the hundred percent mark. We've met with Lou yesterday, who's our representative for FEMA. He's made assumptions that there might be funding for those two categories, A and B, within forty-five, sixty, ninety days, possibly. I've, I've heard from other counties that funding took place two years later, they're just receiving funding for Matthew now. So, we don't have a definitive date of when we'll get funding back for some of these projects, but we're hoping, he's given us some positive reinforcement that he thinks it'll be pretty quick as long as we get everything submitted and completed a hundred percent. Category A is a little bit different, they've given different timeframes for seventy-five percent reimbursement, ninety, eighty, and then seventy-five as time, time progresses. So, we think a lot of the work that we've done on Deer Run will fall in that ninety percent category, and then the rest will fall in either eighty or seventy-five. Everything through FEMA has to go through our insurance carrier for either an approval or denial. FEMA will only reimburse us what we come out of pocket. So, if the deductible's five thousand out of a twenty thousand dollar project, we will only receive seventy-five percent of the five thousand dollar deductible that we incurred. The other fifteen thousand will be covered by insurance. So, if it's denied completely, then we'll get seventy-five or whatever percentage is applicable out of the out-of-pocket cost. So, we're going, we're waiting through insurance to make sure that it's either approved. They're sending site inspectors to come out and check from insurance. So, it's really been a process of trying to coordinate insurance with FEMA at the same time and get all the information uploaded into the, into the grant portal. So, we're working through it, we hope to have everything completed in the next thirty to forty-five days. We should have all our documentation and everything done inside the system. You guys have any questions regarding FEMA?
Based, based on the numbers here, and I know you're waiting on a lot of further information and the percentages here. So, this three hundred and forty-five thousand, three twenty-four is the number, the total number, which we really don't know how much we'll get reimbursed for because of the different categories.
Correct.
And, but right now, non-reimbursed funds is twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, is that...
That for sure is the amount we know we will not get reimbursed at all.
That's the work that we had to...
That's the twenty thousand that we approved for Turtle Run.
Last month.
And five thousand for the stump grinding.
Okay.
So...
So, right now, the only thing we're on is the hook for is the twenty-six, six.
Correct, so far. And then the fifteen percent or twenty-five percent of what they don't reimburse us for, so. Best case scenario, let's say seventy-five percent of the three hundred and twenty thousand, we know for sure, we hope to get, you know, there's always FEMA could come back and want more documentation, or say only, you know, fifty percent of what we invoice is eligible. We haven't gone through that process, so we're waiting back to hear from them.
Okay. Now, on the Vita, that road damage down there, that washout.
Correct.
And I haven't been down there for a couple of weeks, so I don't even know if there's anything been done. That estimated remaining cost is seventy-eight thousand. Now, that's a category, did I, am I reading this correctly, category C?
Correct. That's, it's, they have categories for each.
So, that's not considered emergency?
That's not. Emergency, like I said, it's tricky, it's forced account labor, overtime, preparation for the storm, supplies.
Okay.
Just emergency preparation is really what it calls under that category B.
So, even though that road is not accessible, it's not emergency?
We had that argument, you know, manhole repairs, those manholes collapsed, and for us, that's an emergency, but for FEMA, they have their separate category for utilities and roads and bridges, so it doesn't qualify for B.
Thank you.
So, what are the, are there any percentages on C?
C, everything, every other category is the typical seventy-five percent reimbursement.
So, C, E, and F is seventy-five percent?
Correct.
Okay. And the twenty-six, six, what, what happened with that, that it's not eligible?
Twenty-six, six is the, the board-approved, non-FEMA-related trees on Turtle Run to be, so those are incurred costs because of the hurricane, but are not FEMA-approved. Do you not recall that?
And he was actually traveling.
Ray, you were going...
Okay, so for FEMA purposes, on the golf debris, there's certain requirements that have to be met. So, for example, a tree has to be six inches in diameter, has to be split at the canopy. We went out and inspected all the trees, and the ones that did not qualify, we brought it back to the board. I want to say there was a hundred and forty-five trees.
So, we had, we had twenty-six thousand dollars worth of trees that didn't qualify for FEMA.
Correct, because of the size qualification.
And the stumps didn't qualify for FEMA?
The stumps would have qualified. It's, it was a tricky situation on Deer Run, we wanted to get the course up and running as quick as possible. We decided to just cut the trees and leave them at the stem, and then come back and do it. FEMA only will reimburse for a one-time charge. So, whether it's removing and stump grinding at the same time, they would have been eligible, but because we decided to do it in two separate instances, they won't, they won't pick up both tabs. It should have been one price for both.
And we paid five thousand for that, right?
Five thousand, correct. For a hundred stumps.
Yeah, for a hundred stumps. And we had no stumps on Deer. Or was it, yeah, Deer.
No, it was Deer, because Deer does stumps.
They haven't started yet.
And we had no stumps on Turtle.
No, we had to grind up, no.
Okay.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you, Omar.
Thanks, Omar.
And I just want to say, Omar and Tanya, and I'm sure Mike and Winston, has learned a lot. So, you'll be ready for the next hurricane, right?
Yes.
General Counsel report. Oh, I'm sorry, Tanille.
Okay. I just have a quick couple of things coming up here. We have the Sebring Christmas Parade that we typically participate in every year. This year's a little different because we don't have an event that we're kind of trying to promote for, for Christmas time, so we're leaving it open to staff and families and such that want to come right. So, right now, we only have a few people interested, but I think maybe once we come back from Thanksgiving, we'll have more. So, if any of you all would like to participate, with the Sebring Christmas Parade, it's December first, and it's downtown Sebring at seven o'clock. So, just let me know. And coming up, we have our annual community yard sale, which has always been very popular. We usually have sixty to eighty properties participate. That's going to be Saturday, January twentieth. We'll have our new residents and visitors reception on February sixth here at the Island View. And I am working on nailing down the dates for our annual pickleball tournament. It's usually sometime in mid-February. And then I have passed out a brochure this morning, and those are going to be put in the Visit Florida Welcome Centers. They're in the process of being shipped right now, and so hopefully, within the next week or so, they'll be, they'll be up. So, this will be a great opportunity for us to try out the program for free. So, part of something that Visit Florida is doing for Hurricane Irma relief, and we'll be able to track it based on how many coupons we receive back on the back, so.
Which locations were those?
I-95 and I-75 coming into Florida. I know I'll be traveling out in December, Christmas time, going up 75, so I am planning on stopping at that Welcome Center, too, to see kind of what the display is like. And I know Mr. Brooks has stopped there recently, and a couple of other people have told me they've been in there. So, so hopefully, we'll get some good response, and it'll be a program that we can continue with. This is free through March of two thousand and eighteen for us to participate. And that's it.
Thank you, Tanille. General Counsel report.
All right. Real quick, Ayala, there is no movement. Still nothing since September twenty-sixth, last action by the Second ECA. Code enforcement, Tanya and I had a meeting with the current county attorney, Joy Carmichael, yeah. And we got confirmation that the, the code, our code enforcement changes are going to be on for the December fifth Board of County Commissioners meeting. Tanya and I are going to attend that, just to make sure, hopefully, it goes through without a hitch. You did talk, we discussed the last meeting that you wanted some information about maximum penalties. The, what we have submitted to the county, you know, for approval, talks about a hundred dollars and two hundred, a hundred dollars per day for a first violation, two hundred dollars a day for repeat violations. County stuff goes up to five hundred, but there's also other provisions in what we submitted to the county for approval, which says that if there's a recommendation by the district code enforcement officer, and that the, at the penalty hearing, that the special magistrate can impose a fine up to a thousand dollars per day for a first violation, five thousand dollars per day for a repeat violations, and up to fifteen thousand dollars if it's a violation that's irreparable or irreversible. And one of the things that the special magistrate is supposed to take into consideration when making that decision is the amount of the fine necessary to discourage continuing violations. So, if we've got a repeat violator, my recommendation is to make sure that we have our code enforcement, you know, officer go there and bring that up to the special magistrate and say, "Hey, this is a repeat violator, you know, these hundred-dollar, two hundred-dollar fines are not affecting him, we need something stronger." And the special magistrate would have the ability to impose that.
Very good.
Thank you.
General Managers report.
On Tuesday, you know, David mentioned that we met with the Assistant County Attorney, Joy Carmichael. We also discussed with her about the lots owned by the county within Sunland Lake. She wanted to get up to speed on the estatement process, where they were. You know, we talked about the future lots that the county's going to own and delinquencies. And come to find out, the county staff has not submitted to the Board of County Commissioners a list of surplus lots yet. So, what that means is that in order for the lots to be sold or marketed, the county has to submit to their Board of County Commissioners a surplus list. So, they're going to be working towards that in the next six months. They, they are currently down several staff members in, in the purchasing department, and so we'll be looking forward to seeing that on their Board of County Commissioner Agenda Meeting. Last Thursday, Mike Curley and I met with our account manager with Duke Energy. We discussed our critical facilities, gave him a list, so now... So now, now he knows we exist, and now he has a list of our critical facilities. We also took him by the maintenance facility and the Turtle Run pump station. And so he could see some, just see our facilities, but also talked a little bit to him about that pump station. We are going to have the panel replacement for Turtle on Monday. So, but we, we showed him the components, we showed him, you know, what happened, and also, he was familiar with, with our, our organization. So it was a good meeting, very productive.
The power, power supply issue is not an issue?
Well, he, he didn't confirm or deny that, I mean, by looking at it, but we're going to, I mean, Pro Pump is the vendor in this situation, and they're going to, if we need a, if we need an upgrade there, or if the power supply is an issue, they're going to tell us.
Correct.
Yeah. So Duke Energy will be completely cooperative in whatever we need there.
Okay.
The, the new golf cart fleet bid is, the bid opening is November twenty-seventh. Okay, so that's for our new public play golf carts. The new fleet will be a three-year lease with a dollar buyout. Our current fleet will also be traded in as part of the bid, so we're encouraging, you know, any of those that are interested in just submitting a, a bid for the old carts, they can do so as well. Is that correct, Jim? If you want to submit a bid just to buy the carts, you could do that as well, as part of the bid. We're working towards advertising for proposals for services related to operational evaluations, marketing, and strategic planning, and financial planning. This was based on the services proposed by Global Golf Advisors, which is Henry Delosier. Proposals we expect to be due before Christmas, so we can move forward with that project.
Good.
Okay. Speaking of projects, just a few things. Our dog park, we're waiting on a third quote on the fencing. Soon as we have that quote, we should be able to move forward with that project on Edgewater. So if any of you are not familiar with that, you know, see me or Tanille or Mike Curley, we can kind of show you what we're doing there on the, on Edgewater. We're moving forward with the wooden billboard replacement on Highway twenty-seven. We're waiting on the actual construction drawing, so we had to, in order for us to find someone to build it, we had to have some construction specifications drawn up, so we're doing that now. As I mentioned, Turtle Run replacement for the pump panel is Monday. And Mike mentioned the maintenance facility. This was a one point seven nine million dollar project. We have already paid most, almost, we're down to about two hundred and forty-nine thousand remaining that, of expenses on this project, so we're close. Currently, we have a, if you remember me talking about how we're going to pay for this project, it's from the Utility Renewal and Replacement Improvement Fund. And this is a savings account that is funded by the utility operations. And after we've paid, we, you know, like I said, we've almost paid the entire project, we currently have a balance of two point seven million in this savings account. So we're, we're replenishing the account as we, you know, projected. Last thing, our monthly reports from our department heads are listed on our website, so I encourage you, if, if you get a chance, to look through those. We don't give copies out, you know, during every monthly meeting, but there's plenty of information about, you know, financials and code enforcement, security, anything you want to, you'd like to know what our departments are, are doing on a monthly basis, that's on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Bill, no, across. President, I'm glad you guys went over the rules and regulations. It's, it's important that they were straightened out. But, you know, there are evil people out there, and they think differently than we do. How to avoid taxes, how to avoid paying anything, and how to get away. Now, you're talking about family membership, and it's a definition of people under a roof, basically, what it is. Okay, corporate membership. People would say, well, look, I live in a condo with twenty-three units. It's a business, why can't I apply for a corporate membership? Then you would say, all those people living in that twenty-three units could say, look, I want a break on a family membership. So, you know, this is how twisted things go. So maybe corporate membership is mortifying, or it's eliminated. The gentleman behind me didn't understand, I thought, he thought it was going to be eliminated completely, so maybe explain that again. Driving range. Driving range, I've been recently taking home golf balls, half a basket or so, and then return them the next day. The problem is, sometimes, the machine is not working, or it's, or there's no golf balls, or whatever. So, you know, you just come back the next day and you hit eight or ten golf balls. If I'm guilty of that, fine, but I, I picked that up on other people doing it. Other people have bags, and they drop them out there in the driving range. All right, so-
Two wrongs don't make a right, and you are guilty.
Well, I am guilty. I'll fess up, yes.
I mean, come on.
I mean, I've, I've, I've talked to people out there that have, they empty out golf bags with their old golf balls.
We need people to set examples, not to-
And I've spoken to them, yeah. So this is the first time. All right. I'm glad you kind of explained leave of absence and death in the family, because, you know, somebody may get that confused, you know? The, the leave of absence, you said one time per year, and that's it, leave of absence. You know?
I mean, one time, once, period, not, not per year.
Okay, so now, what I'm just saying, say that it's a crazy scenario, or somebody just joins, he's there for a month, he has to go and has an operation, he's out for three months, he comes back, recuperates, plays a little bit, and then he's out again, whatever. He's out more than once a year. So they're just saying, once a year? You know, just make it a little bit more self-explanatory, that's all?
It said, it says once, once, I think. Period. I think, I think that's what it says, Billy. I'm not sure.
It said once, yeah.
Yeah.
But somebody says, well, look, I've had two operations this year already, yet, you know? So, um, on those handicap flags, handicap flags are a real problem, I understand that. But, you know, I think it, we had a program where we put the blue directional for the handicaps in back of the green. And I think that would wear, save on the wear and tear. And actually, on Deer, you're walking downhill instead of walking uphill. But the, it was just an embarrassment last week to see car after car with no handicap flag, just driving right up off the green. And I've, I should have taken pictures, yes. All right. Well, I, I, I understand this, I understand this rebate on, from FEMA, and I really hope it works out. You guys did a great job out there. I don't know if you're going to meet the category B, September fourth to October third, with a hundred percent. I hope you do. But there's a lot of work being done out there, and you guys should be congratulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Okay, discussion to and from the board.
I got a couple of things. I know we're running late. I just, and I talked with Tanya about this, what, it's, it's the wetland, what, what would we refer to that, the trees on?
It's a conservation, wetland.
Conservation?
It's a wetland right there on the Sun and Lake Boulevard.
The area where the, to the right of Tenth Hall on Deer, where those trees are down very close to the road, to Sun and Lake Boulevard. I personally would like us to consider doing something about it, because I think it's an ISO off of Sun and Lake.
This is on Columbus? Columbus, this is one on Columbus.
No, it's on Sun and Lake Boulevard.
It's on Sun and Lake Boulevard.
And Sunrise.
Sun and Lake Boulevard.
It's on Sun and Lake Boulevard.
Sun and Lake Boulevard. If I'm on the tenth fairway, on Deer Run, and I look to the right-
Oh.
Across the street-
Yeah.
There's a bunch of trees that are down, like, within fifteen or twenty feet of, of the street-
It's in the wetland there.
That I think are an ISO. And I don't think it's, that we should leave them there, personally.
I, I think, Ray, I, I think we're, get our stuff done, and then we're, go back to that, but that's not, I mean, I agree with you, but it's not a priority for me right now to get those trees out of there, because we're going to pay for it if we can't, and we're going to have to.
I was just looking to see if there was interest, so we could pursue-
Well, there, there might be, once we get some.
So you want to wait on that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to. I mean, we can't do it now, that's for sure.
The only other thing, I guess, we went to the Casper meeting, and we never, and we told Casper, the management, that we would prioritize the standards that they handed out to us. We don't have to do it today, since we've cut short on time, but we said we would get back to them prioritizing them. So this is just a reminder that we have to do that at the next meeting, I guess.
No, I got it on my list, bring it up to date, talk about what we want to propose to them, you know, as far as, okay?
All right, then, the only other thing is, please, on the Sun and Lake website, put up all the memberships. There's still one missing.
I don't know what you're referring to.
The corporate membership is not listed on the Sun and Lake website.
Oh.
And if we offer a membership, we should list it on the website.
Can we take a five-minute break? Can we take a five-minute break? I got a lot of, I got to take a-
I'm going to ask, take, I know Omar and Tanya got to go here pretty quick, but I'd like to take a five-minute break, because we've been here three hours without moving.
Can I just mention two things? My, the conference call that I mentioned is with Fifth Third Bank, so I'll update you all very soon on that, on that conference call. Also, David did read through the golf committee bylaws and regulations?
Yeah, there's, I, I think it's, it's more than sufficient for what, for what it's going to be. It's, it's a, you know, it's advisory or fact-finding only. It's, it's perfectly okay as drafted.
Okay. Very good. So we're going to take a five-minute? I need a motion to quit for five minutes?
Resist.
Resist, yeah.
I'll make a motion to resist for five minutes.
Second. Can you send that to me?
I need a motion to, to come back on board?
Second. Of course, the guy we need is gone.
Okay.
Jim.
We're waiting for Jim.
Jim.
But really, guys, we, we still have a-
The master of ceremonies.
Do you want to, do you want to keep on discussion from the board on the Casper thing? Let's do that. Jim, you can take your time.
Board discussion?
Yeah. We're still in a board-to-board discussion.
We're in a board-to-board discussion on the priorities.
That's all I had, I'm done.
Okay. Dan, do you have anything?
I do, I had two things I thought we ought to, that I'd like to see done. First of all, the meeting with Casper last week was okay and, and fine. I liked a lot of stuff that they came up with, assuming that they will actually do that, but, but I don't know that, if I were sitting in Tony, what's, what's Tony's name?
CNC.
CNC.
CNC. If I had been sitting in his position in a public forum like that, I don't think I'd have been wanting to negotiate any kind of settlement either, because that would basically involve admitting that my people had done something wrong, or that I was liable, or that I had been negligent. So I think that's, a better venue for that would be someone from Sun and Lake sitting down with him in a private conversation, and then bringing that back to us. My suggestion would be that we authorize Tanya to do so. To talk to him about their sharing in some of the pain from the sodding that we had to pay for.
Well, yeah, I agree, and, but we have to, and it's a good idea, if, if you want her to do it. But we need, we need to say, we need to tell her what we want. I don't want Tanya negotiating for us. I mean, she can do what we tell her, but she probably has a different amount or anything of that, so I, I think we have to come up with what we want.
I'm, I'm okay with that as well. I just think, I don't think it was realistic, after I thought it through, to expect to get any answer other than what we got. I mean, we still might get the same answer, but I think, I don't think we all just let it go, is what I'm saying. That's number one, and we can talk about that. The second thing I wanted to mention is that we keep talking about expanding the kitchen, but the kitchen isn't going to really generate revenue. An expanded kitchen isn't going to generate expanded revenue. The only way to expand revenue is either expand the dining room space, or figure out how to get more people into what we got. The only way you're going to get more people into what we got is if we offer an additional program. I know that when we first came here, it was a big deal on Sunday brunch, and we could use our existing space, just as a thought, instead of spending whatever it takes to expand the kitchen, or in addition to. I think we ought to be thinking more along the lines, or at least parallel, how do we get additional revenue out of the space we've got? One of the problems I think we have are that, all right, let's, let me just say, from my personal experience, I am not going to sit in that bar next to the bar when we've had a morning outing, call it, and you've got seven drunks sitting there at the bar, hooting and hollering, and I'm sitting there trying to have dinner. It's not going to happen. So we got to figure some way around that issue.
Okay, good point, Stan. We'll come back to that, Jim, okay? Joey, you got anything?
No, I'm fine.
Mark?
When you said we're going to come back to it, are we going to maybe talk a little bit about expansion?
Yeah, yep.
And Casper, sharing? Okay, you just want to add to the list, or?
Yeah, or you can, you can cover it, if you've got something.
Well, okay. I couldn't agree more with that Wednesday workshop situation about sharing some of the costs. I think that they should share some of the costs. That's my personal opinion. I think there is some responsibility there, whether it's Tanya to negotiate that. I would think she's, she's the general manager, she should be the one that's doing that, and kind of come up with some ideas. She might get feedback from the various supervisors as to what their thoughts are. I'm not sure how she wants to approach that. It will come out in a public meeting in some manner or fashion, I believe, though. I guess, I, maybe she could correspond to us via email and- I guess, maybe she could correspond to us via email and whatnot. But if, if Casper does assume some level of responsibility and some level of compensation, it's gonna come out in a public meeting. And so, it's going to, it could taint it a little.
Sooner or later, it will. It has to come to the public. But just the discussion or the negotiation, to me, should be outside of the public forum and then be brought back to us for a.
I, I, that's what I'm saying. I agree with that. As far as the kitchen expansion, I know this has been just a huge, huge project. A lot of time and effort has been put into it, and multiple supervisors have been on the board at the time. And what initially started out as a relatively small plan has expanded into what actually shocked the board last year when they came up with the full expansion and knocking down walls and turning the bar in different directions and going out and closing in the lanai. I mean, it just get a little bit out of control. The thing is, at that time, the revenue dollars were brought up, to your point. Yeah, it's great to have all of this stuff, but how are we going to get some level of revenue? And it doesn't necessarily have to be a wash. It doesn't have to pay for it, but it needs to at least cover some of the expense. And I think that's why a lot of this gets scaled down into a smaller scale. I think that Jim and Joe have had, you know, a number of meetings. I was a little concerned, like I said early on, because it still seems to me that we maybe don't have as defined a requirements document as we need. And then, with Cliff being involved in it, that's where I was confused, why he knew we didn't want to go for a million three or a million four. We wanted not to build outside the walls. Kinda understood what our requirements for, for working within the footprint. And then, all of a sudden, we're finding that maybe we can't accomplish what we thought we were, there was a breath of fresh air a few weeks ago, thinking that we maybe were on to something. And now it seems like that we're potentially looking at reconstruction. So, we've gotta look at where that money's gonna come from, and what's the best part for the, you know, what is good for the district. So, I don't know where we're gonna go with that, but I would like to see some numbers of revenue, how are we gonna get the revenue? As far as your third comment about sitting in the other room with, I'm always amazed, and I've had this conversation, and I think everybody on this board has gone in and said, why did they seat people coming in for dinner after there's a Wednesday shotgun and there's five, and they have them over by the windows where there's nine tables of guys that have been there for an hour? And, you know, it's, it always amazes me. So, you said you'd never sit in there, and I totally agree with you. I wouldn't either, and I don't quite know how they, they work that. But I would think that you want to put it on the other side of this, this wall. And, so that's just my comments about what you had to say.
This particular evening I'm talking about wasn't even members. They were sitting at the bar, and we were sitting at the table immediately beside the bar, and we were told that's the only table that was available.
Ooh.
I won't ever do that again. I'll turn around and walk away.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, we left Thursday last week because we were basically over on the other side. Anyway, long story short, we just.
You know, and revenues are critical to the district. I mean, we need to, we need to make the numbers so, you know, but at what cost, I guess, is the real question. If you're gonna lose people walking out of dinners and maybe not coming back again, then that's lost revenue, so. Good.
Good.
Next.
All right. I guess on the dining room situation, I mean, Jim, I think he mentioned it earlier today, that there were some conversations, I hear, he's got a plan with Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, about moving more people from that room into this room. Am I right? If I'm off, I'm off.
With the soft, with the plan?
I thought Charlie and Virgil, we all talked about this.
Well, the discussion was, we want to make this room more attractive for the people that are eating in it.
Oh, I just assumed that we were gonna try and move people from there into here because of the situation with the golf. Maybe that's an assumption I made on my part.
I think they avoid putting people in here, if they can.
I may, I may have misunderstood.
Is there a reason, Jim, that you do that? I mean, that you set them there? Is it easier for the staff?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, I think a lot of it, last year, there were 270 functions here in this room, so functions are going up, coming down. You have parties of 20 and 30 in here. So, one of the things that I'll have Mike do, because I don't think there's an understanding of how the whole building is used, you know, and it, things don't, there's a reason Chili's and these other places don't change their footprint, is that it's very hard to do. So, when we try to be all things to all people, it's, it's very time-consuming. So, but I think the right way to do that is to communicate that. So, a lot of it is just, you can get a definite idea just by looking at our calendar of what's coming in, and you can, you know, one of the things that's nice, and I don't know how it'll print out, but for about, I believe it's about nine months now, we've been on an iPad, you know, of every night of how things are set. So I'll look into seeing how much of that can be, you know, communicated to try to move things around.
My fault. I thought, I thought we were considering moving more people in here, but perhaps not. I mean, I.
He will now.
I think the idea is for them to like this better and want to be over here, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Or another way to look at it is, do you want to, you can come up with the names, but would you like to eat on the lanai, or in the island view, or in?
Yeah.
We need to come up with another root, a name for this other than the banquet room.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree, I agree.
That would be my comments on the restaurant. The kitchen expansion, you're never gonna justify the cost. So anybody who thinks we are is just kidding themselves. The question is, is it the right thing to do for the community? And that's really the decision that we have to make, for whatever price it is. If it's 300,000, or 800,000, or a million two, we gotta say, is this the right thing to do for Sun 'n' Lake and the district, or is it not?
Well, I agree with that completely, and I'd be in favor of it. I'm just saying that we need to, we don't need to get lost in the kitchen expansion. We need to figure out how we can better utilize what we got to bring more revenue in.
Oh, I agree. We should do it as economical as possible, no question about it. But I think we've had enough conversation on it. We gotta get this thing to where the board sees something, and we can give feedback as to whether we think it's a great thing or not a great thing. So that would be my opinion. The kitchen expansion, the Casper thing, and I'm the one that brought it up at the meeting as far as charging them, or asking for their partnership, help with the partnership. You know, we pay them 120,000, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
We pay them 120,000 dollars a year. Realistically, how much do you think they're gonna give us with us paying them 120,000 dollars a year? I didn't think about this till after the fact. But, you know, I think we have to be honest with ourselves, you know, if you're gonna ask for 30 grand because it costs 70, you're asking for 25% of their profits, and I'm just not so sure that's even got a chance a hell of a flying. So I would just think we should consider that now, as we go forward. That was it, right? Those three things?
Okay.
That's it?
I, I, is there any chance, I mean, we've talked about this kitchen expansion. We now have essentially three new people on the board. One has been intimately involved with looking at the kitchen, along with Jim.
That being Joe.
Is there a way we can realistically look and talk about this and say, what if it was a million two? Let's say we have a number of a million two. What can we do for a million two? And move forward with a decision? Instead, we're bouncing all over the place, because we really don't know what the board, this is a new board, what the board will approve going forward. We knew what it was before. It was a shock because of the expectation was somewhere in the area of 500,000, and it came a million two, and it became a sticker shock, without really thinking all the way through it. Now we're in a situation where we're saying, we're starting, we have a board here that, so maybe they want to go for something of a million two. I don't know. I'm not. And maybe they want to expand further out. Can't we start a dialogue to come up with what we think is reasonable?
I'm kinda depending on Joe to tell me what that is. Come back to me with a project that he thinks works, and I'm good with that. You know, I haven't really looked at it. I think it's unrealistic to think you can cram enough equipment in that footprint, which wasn't big enough to begin with, to adequately take care of what we need. I don't, I don't see any way you can do that. I was amazed when I heard that, that they thought we could. And I guess, obviously, we can't. So, I don't, I don't have a clue between 500,000 and a million five as to where we ought to be. But I'm assuming you're gonna be able to do that for us in 30 days?
Well, I mentioned it to Tanya in our meeting, when I went over the thing here and that. The other thing, I can feel the, we're all wondering if we're making any progress, and that's what I talked to her about. And I know Jim and Joe are working, but we, and I got, like Mark said, I got excited about doing that. And I just think we, you probably need to do what Mark recommended, is get the best thing you can get and get it to us, because it just seems like we're going nowhere, go back and forth. But, and then, you can bring it to us, and we're either, we're talking about it, vote it in, vote it out, and at least get an idea of what, what all of us want. But, and I know, I'm not saying it's not easy, Jim. I know this is a problem, but it's frustrating to us because we want it, and I know it's probably more frustrating to you and Joe because you're involved in it, but.
But just keep in mind a couple things. The attempt to put everything in the existing footprint was done at our request.
Yeah.
Because.
Our request, before you.
No, I mean, the one that spurred it, the prints we got that don't work was a request we made when we were there. We basically said, you know, you've gotta go back to the original footprint and find out what you can do, and if there's a way to create a world that makes sense for Kevin, and for the budget, and for the club. And they felt like they had some ability to do that, and the reality, when they got done doing the preliminary design work, was they, they couldn't do it. Dan's exactly right. The footprint is not large enough. So, I don't know that it's been back and forth as much, as nobody really ever got down to the details around the existing footprint and what could be done. The other thing I think we've learned unequivocally is the million two, or the million two thirty, whatever it was, for that whole variety of projects was probably also not doable. We couldn't do all those projects for that number that we originally were looking at because the cost of the kitchen project is gonna be substantially higher than what we anticipated at that point.
Well, I guess that's the question, then. If, if the question is, the expectation is some dollar, and I have no idea now what that expectation is. If somebody said to me, we really need 2 million dollars to do it right, you know, expand outside of this footprint, at least I'd know at that point, now, that we're faced with 2 million, and I could start to calculate in my mind, you know, some ideas. Now, when they came back to the board before, and our expectation was somewhere in the area of like 500 to 600,000, and they came back with a million two, that, that was a sticker shock. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we could be bouncing around this for the next two years. Let's get a number to do this right once, and if we say, no, we can't do it, we can't do it.
And we'll have a number, and we'll have a number by January.
You're doing a great job.
I know what you're saying.
Nobody, you got.
No, no, I think, and I apologize for interrupting, but here's what it is. He came in, Cliff, with his experience, looked at what we asked for, just for the kitchen, and told us it was gonna be a million dollars, and it, it knocked us over. You know, it was beyond what we thought. And, you know, we brought in CT Design, we brought in Don Edwards, we brought in Acme, and we brought in CJ Fishman to try to get it inside of our roof and really get away from that million-dollar number. And we just keep coming back to the million-dollar number. So, it's almost, I think what's, what you're asking for, which is applicable, is that we're gonna end up going to what they recommended based on what we told them we needed. But I do think, for the project, it was the best thing that could happen, because hypothetically, if we do spend a million dollars on the kitchen, I think we can definitely say, we tried every way that we possibly could to make this a less expensive project and make it work, but we haven't been able to do it. So, right now, what Cliff wants to do is to get a contractor involved, because he, I don't, you know, he said, I just used my experience to come up with this million-dollar number for the first plan. He said, I would really like to get somebody with a little bit more in-depth experience, not, you know, to look at it as a contractor. So that's where we're at right now. But I, I do believe we're coming back with the original proposal, with the original design that they had in mind, you know, to the board as soon as it can be drawn up. We just basically stopped them in the beginning from drawing it up because we felt it was beyond, you know, where we wanted to be financially. But, but in trying to get into the number of where we want to be financially, we can't get Kevin enough benefit for him to look at us and say, it's worth the money that we're gonna spend. So, it will be, but, you know, the kitchen design that they have designed now is great, but it's just, it only addresses 80% of the time. The 20% where we're actually full in the building is where he has the trouble. But I do hear you. We will get, what we will do is, we will bring back the right way, you know, the most cost-benefit way to do it to the board, and I would say, hopefully, they can get it drawn up by the January meeting.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if, I'm sure you've heard this, and I know Mark's been on the board about four months after I got on, about the time you came here. And so, for me, it's been a very long process, because originally, I'm the one that brought up a kitchen expansion. And that was almost two years ago. So, you know, and that's why I get a little flustered. And then, then I brought up the lanai a month or so later. And then it became a clubhouse renovation. So, and you know all this, you've heard it all. But it, for me, it's just something simple. And that's what I asked for to begin with, was a kitchen expansion, and Mark's been part of it. And I know the three of them here haven't, haven't really experienced some of the stuff we have, but it's, I just want the best price we can do, and then let us decide. And I know you guys do too, and I'm not being critical, but it's very, very frustrating to me to still be talking about the kitchen almost two years later. But, I got a question on what Dan said about the brunch. Could you look into, I know for a fact, when, when I go to church with my wife, there's a lot of us always looking for a place to have breakfast after church. I don't know if that's possible, but I think with this place on a Sunday morning, you could, and I don't even know if you're, I don't know if you'd have to staff or anything, but a place where you wouldn't have to walk, Dan, wait 20, 25, half hour, might go over good. So if you could look into it, maybe get back to us, because I, I know of a lot of places that would like to come here and not have to.
No, and I could say I'll get back to you, but I've brought the subject up with Kevin probably four or five times.
Okay.
Just based on the size of our kitchen and what we do, and based on the size of the staff, you know, basically utilizing that day off is what keeps them all together.
Okay.
So to open up another day now, you know, it would be a whole restructuring to bring, for him to bring on extra staff, and then knowing Kevin, he wants to be here. So it's just, it's a huge. So it's just, it's a huge...
If we did the remodel, would we be able to do it?
Of course, yeah. It changes, the biggest thing, when you talk to Kevin, the biggest priority that he wants to get rid of with the remodel is number one, safety. It bothers him how busy we are. You can just tell when you talk to Kevin, it just, he doesn't want something to happen on his watch. And when he sees what we do, when we're, you know, doing a banquet and doing a la carte at the same time, he's concerned. After that, the next thing is the fact that he'd love to get food that is going to be served on Friday here on Wednesday instead of Thursday. So when there's a Friday banquet, he doesn't have enough space to get the food on Wednesday and start prepping it. So it's kind of like everything's, and it's a bad way to put it, but everything's a fire drill because he can't ever get ahead of things. So when you start lining up his priorities, so one was safety, two is that being able to get ahead of things. And then three is basically, I would say, being able to start doing sauces and doing other things that will make what we can serve more interesting. Because now the way he puts everything together, it's basically mechanically engineered for everybody to be able to fit since everything's so tight. So those are his, kind of his three priorities. And so when he looks at these designs, that's what he's needing. But I've heard you loud and clear. Well, I know where to go. I know exactly where we need to go. I mean, we need the kitchen that...
That original proposal that you guys came up with, didn't that include like doing something out here?
Oh, sure. The 1-4 included...
Oh, that was the 1-4?
Yeah, it was 1-4. It included moving the bar and closing the members' room, and then also doing quite a bit to the lanai. Like, it was like 250 for the lanai.
I was talking about walls in here.
Plus a contingency.
So we're thinking that was about 400,000 outside of the kitchen, and now we're just going to concentrate on the kitchen?
Yeah, the kitchen, the original one kitchen was 990 for the original kitchen. Yeah.
How'd Kevin like it?
He loved, yeah, he liked it. Yes, very much.
You're having pizza?
Is there anything else before I get into talking about Casper? Okay. I just want to talk to the three new guys, if I can, just a little. Because you guys haven't experienced some of the stuff we have. And I'm going to try to be careful with how I say it and what I say. But it's really tough for me to, I don't want this to turn into a negotiation. I don't think it should be. We have, you know, we had some costs. We've got hit with hurricane stuff, extra cost. We have, there's nothing we did wrong with $72,000 worth of damage on them greens. We did nothing. I just, I just, I'll go back real quick to when we tried to take the incentive away. And I was picked to talk to Tony, and I met with Tony. I don't think it went real well, the conversation. Because the next thing I knew, Larry White got involved, who was our president, and I got kind of moved out. Mark, if I say something wrong, correct me. But I think the meeting before we had to sign the contract, which was two or three days before, it had to be done. We got a proposal from Tanya and Larry White, that this is what it would be, and this is what we got to do, or it's null and void. And that's why I'm a little cautious about, I would like us to be able to talk about what we want. Give that to Tanya or tell Jim, and then we get it. But I don't like the idea of meeting one at a time with them because it's different. And I don't know, I'm asking you guys the answer that, how we do this and get what the board wants and not what somebody else wants. So I'm looking for ideas. But I'm certainly not in favor of going back and forth negotiating because, hell, there are, they manage our golf courses, and we hired them, and somebody failed. But it sure as heck wasn't us. And I'm not asking for the world from them, but I don't think we should get into a negotiation thing. Because to me, if we decide what we want and they don't want to do it, then we have an alternative. Which I don't like, but I don't, I just like us to be able to talk and get what we want as a group. And I know how these things have worked the two years I've been on this board.
Well, I think it's a new board, and it's a new situation. But I think you, in essence, you have two issues here. One, since you have two golf courses, you have Deer Run and you have Turtle Run, all right? Deer Run, you basically have fungus, and you can call it Bermuda damp off or whatever you want to call it. But basically, you kill two greens and parts of others. And to me, that was, you can't help but get fungus when you have certain conditions. What you can do is recognize it early and treat for it. And I think that probably didn't happen in an appropriate manner. Now, the question is, is that negligence or is that just a superintendent that missed a call? Anybody can make a mistake. Turtle Run, on the other hand, if your program says, "We're going to have somebody check these greens every day," and they didn't... Now, I don't really believe that the reason we lost greens on Turtle Run is because the fungus, the sprinklers didn't work for three days because they already had fungus. But, so you've got two issues here. One's, if you read the contract, the only way that they're liable to us is if there's negligence.
Right.
So if you want to get right down to it, to me, we ought to share the cost. If we're partners, we ought to share the cost. Okay? That's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, me too.
And I don't know that, all I was trying to say was, in that meeting, when Ray brought that up, I was sitting there thinking, "Yeah, that's right." But the more I thought about it, is if I was sitting on the other side of the table, I would have said the same thing he said. If you want to talk to me, come on down to my office, and we'll talk about it, and we'll do what we can. But I'm not doing it here. I would have been the same way.
Well, I think probably three or four of us would have mentioned it if Ray was just first.
Yeah, I would have, but the more I thought about it, probably wasn't fair.
Yeah, the first thing, wow, I think, the first thing I said to him when he had a meeting with, before you and Ray were on, is the second thing I said to him was, "I want you to consider paying for some of this." And I think very strongly you should consider that. And that's not a threat. That's just something that, I thought, even from talking to you, I know that... And we certainly had nothing to do with what happened. But I just don't want somebody else negotiating for the five of us. If we're going to do that, let's put some parameters in it.
Well, I don't see how we can, because you can't really negotiate in a public forum. I mean, it has to be somebody, I just brought up Tanya since she's not one of us. And she, if she's the person who is our general manager, she should be capable of handling that.
Yeah, but what she might want and what we might want are two different things.
She can't approve it without our...
Well, that's what I mean. How do we get, do we talk about it in front of everybody, or do we?
I don't know.
That's what I want, how we do this. I mean, I don't mind Tanya doing it, but I don't, I want parameters set before we do it.
It's tough with you here.
Once we set parameters in a public forum, you've got a Casper employee sitting there too.
I can listen to it later, just like the rest of the world.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's...
The whole problem is, the whole world hears everything you say unless you say it to Tanya or her office.
It's a whole lot like setting the minimum for, that we're going to charge for outside deals. Once we say $15, the world wants $15. And once we said $12, the world wants $12. I don't know that I want to get, all I would say to them, if we're truly partners, then we ought to share the cost. And that's as far as I'm going.
But we still have to, as a board, convey that and what we want. And that's all I'm looking for.
She can talk to each one of us individually and find out what we think. But I think the board has to authorize her to enter into discussions. Let's don't call it negotiations, discussions.
At least that's what I think. I'm telling you, we only give them $120,000 a year. I don't know what you think you're going to get. If you want to try and come up with a number, the way we should do it is decide a number here today. And since Mike is the president, and Mike said that we would get back to them, we get back to them. Otherwise, next? I mean, that's what we decided. We said we were going to talk about it and get back to them.
But if we decide a number, then, and say, "Take it or leave it," okay? If they don't take it, are we really and truly going to say, "All right, your six months is, we're giving you notice today, and now six months you're out of here"? I don't know that we really want to go through that pain. Because it's going to be painful for them, but don't fool yourself. It'll be painful for us too. I'd rather the negotiation take place somewhere or discussion and bring it back to us saying, "This is what..."
Okay, should I ask?
How do you propose that they bring that back to us?
Tanya would bring back a report to us saying, "This is what we've discussed."
Individually?
She can do that at the next board meeting. We would have to approve it.
That's, it wouldn't be a public forum, is what you're saying? It would be an individual, one-on-one or whatever, via email?
She could talk to us. Mike wanted us to tell her what we wanted. We can't do that individually.
We can do it individually. You can't do it as a group.
We can't do it as a group without it being a public forum. So we can tell her what we think. She can go talk to him, and then she can bring it back to, the final results that she comes up with, back to us to either accept or say, "You guys are out of here," one of the two. Or not, whatever. I don't see any other way to do it.
What kind of money are you all looking for?
We can't tell. I don't think we need to tell.
I mean, realistically, I mean, keep in mind the 120. How much money you think you want to ask them for? I can't imagine.
We can't say that without setting a bottom line that we're willing to settle for, I don't think.
What was that? I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
I don't think we can say a number without setting the bottom, as he said, this is a public forum, and they can read it just like we can read it or listen to it. If we say 25,000, guess what it's going to be? 25,000 or less. It sure as heck isn't going to be 50. So, I mean, I just, I think we have to authorize someone to enter discussions with Casper. That's all.
Okay, that's fine. If we authorize somebody to go with Tanya and come up with a number, I won't disagree with that, but I want to know what the consequences are if they don't do it. That I want to be a partner of, or part of.
That would have to be a decision of the board. That's a decision of the board.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to say, just to pick a number out, we want 25,000. If you don't give us 25,000, we're going to, whatever that part is, I'd like to know, before we do it.
Yeah, oh yeah, it wouldn't be a...
It would have to come back to us.
It'd have to come back to us.
It'll come back to us as Casper's willing to do this, and then it's up to us to say, "Well, okay, we'll accept that, and we're fine with it," or "No, we're not."
Okay. I'm good.
So why, should we ask Tanya to meet with us individually? Yeah. And I'd like to be in that with those deals at the end with Tony, if you guys would allow me to do that.
To what?
At the end, before it comes to the board, if Tony has any questions, one of us should be there. Yeah, and I'd like permission to be me.
Yeah, present. Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay, Joe?
I didn't understand that.
Okay. We're going to ask Tanya to talk to Tony after she talks to us. But I'm going to be involved in that too, with Tanya.
We're going to double team him, is that what?
Yeah. Triple team him if we can.
I'm not sure I'd sit in that meeting if I were him, but that's up to him.
Well, that's, it really is. It's up to them, and it's up to us, you know, it's...
That's like a guy always comes in my office, says, "I want to bring my lawyer." Well, guess what I'm going to do? I ain't talking to you until I get money in the bill.
But I'm not going to, I just want...
She's not, I'm not saying she should be authorized to make, to commit us to anything. I'm saying she's authorized to talk to them and bring it back to us. That's all.
Anything else?
As far as general board discussion?
Yeah, I think we'll go back to the...
We will in a second. Trying to think exactly how to say this. I know poor Jim gets blindsided sometimes, maybe by me, by maybe others. I don't know. I don't intentionally ever do it, and I wouldn't. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to Jim prior to any of the meetings, or at any time, in fact. And I also appreciate that I have the ability to talk to anybody in the district. What I really have and continue to have a problem with, and I have to air it right now, so it's a public record, is, and I'm only going to use the example of Pike Lake because it's first and foremost in everybody's mind, plus the new board members have been kind of exposed to it. I had a meeting or a conversation with you, Jim, last week after the, I say last week, it must have been the week before, after the workshop, and I followed up because I thought there was going to be some other program, corporate, seasonal corporate program that you and Dan were going to discuss. And at the time, you kind of indicated to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, because my memory's not always that sharp, but at the time, you'd indicated to me that the resolution as it's proposed is basically it. And then you and I talked about, you know, play-type cards and things of that nature. And, you know, we said, you know, I think we were actually going in a direction that we both agreed on. I'm in a two-day tournament, so that's how it kind of ended. The resolution as it was proposed for today is the resolution. Nothing further came out of it. You couldn't share anything with me if you spoke to Dan. I didn't receive anything from Dan saying he had, you know, changed, you know, some kind of new program. So I come into a meeting, typically, I don't even know what's going to be presented. So I've got to make a decision in a few minutes. I get an email yesterday with a lot of updates. And one of the updates was, what I would believe is about 120 degrees out from what the original program was, and it talked about this 200 rounds, it talked about six people, it talked about a lot of different things that we never discussed, okay? We went from five people to six people. We did stay at, the only thing that I see in here was the 200 rounds was the consistent number. So last night, I'm reading it, after golf yesterday, I'm reading it, and I'm saying, "Now I've got to kind of think this through for the meeting in the morning." I would have loved to have had more time to kind of prepare and then sit down with you. But I never had the opportunity to sit down with you yesterday because when I got home, you know, at 3 o'clock, and I read the email, and I had other plans for the day, plus I think you were going to be going, you probably were going home. So I couldn't have a conversation with you. So now I'm faced with that situation here at a board meeting. You know, I'm going to walk out of this meeting, probably say, and I'm going to think of a thousand reasons why I might have looked in another direction or maybe even possibly voted another way. But without having that information in advance, I have a tough time making a decision. You know, getting the information the day before and then making thousands of dollars worth of decisions the next day. I just can't do it. It doesn't work well for me. And that has to do with anybody. If Tanya came and said, you know, "We need to buy this new Kubota," and it wasn't an emergency, and she says, "It's going to cost us $50,000 for this Kubota," I said, "Well, when did we find out about this?" "Well, we knew two weeks ago." And I said, "Well, why didn't I know about this two weeks ago?" Instead of just kind of coming and saying, "You need to vote on it." I will not do that in the future. If something comes to me at the 11th hour, if there's a high probability, because I haven't had a chance to research it, there's a high probability that I'll say no, not because I don't think it's a great idea, only because I haven't had a chance to think it through. You know, that's me.
No, so I hear you that you want the information earlier. What I don't understand is basically, when Dan and I talked, I don't believe we came up with any new ideas. So the only thing that was sent to you about Pike Lake... So, the, the only thing that was sent to you about Pike Lake, uh, it, or Pike Lake, or this membership, was, I don't think we were firm in five people. So, the only new idea that I had at all was, was six people, and that wasn't even for Pike Lake, 'cause they only have five people. So, I guess my question is, I don't really understand on that subject, what was new that you weren't informed of, if you read that.
Okay.
Because I think what's happening is, we have this sunshine law, and this is just my opinion. I'm being held to a level of communication with my job that's unattainable. You know, I'm not staffed with tons of people to do tons of things. I'm, I'm in day-to-day, and I've got five people I've gotta communicate with, and I really don't have to communicate with. The way the contract's written is for me to run the club, but we're trying to keep everybody so informed that it's not possible. And I'm really just trying to be honest, that I, we've gotta get our expectations in line, so I can get this out earlier. Um, but I don't, you know, most of this stuff, to me, in a way, was all just rehashing everything, because at the workshop, it was brought up that people were being blindsided, that it came in and they didn't know what was coming up. So, you know, to me, the summer corporate membership was stuff we already knew. Um, a week ago, I had, had sent you that we weren't, you know, moving forward with the design on the kitchen. Uh, the blinds were, were an update, the rules and regs was an update. Um, the golf course priorities was from the workshop, it was just a, a to-do type item. And then we talked about the tournament rates, so, to me, in this, there wasn't, there wasn't almost, in my mind, a single thing new, but I was trying to line, trying to outline, you know, what we were worried about, because I might have been oversensitive, but to me, at the workshop, it's like, "You're bringing stuff to us we don't know anything about, and we walk in this room, and we don't know anything about it." So, this was just kind of my attempt at an agenda. Um, you know, after today, I decided that I was, I'm gonna send this every Saturday before the, before the Friday board meeting, and not wait, um, to try to update the information. But I, but I do hear you, this, this needs to get out earlier.
And, and maybe I misstated it, so I'll step back and apologize in advance. The items on here, there is one, two, three, there's four items on here that were basically discussion items, okay? The first item, though, was a voting item, where we had to vote. Discussions, I, I think it's great that you did this, and I appreciate it. And it was essentially what you were saying, you're gonna recap what I'm going to cover tomorrow. But when we have a vote coming up, that's where I'm a little concerned. Because if something changes, and I don't have an opportunity for you and I, let's say, to discuss this, then I might make the wrong decision, and I might go home, like I said today, and say, "What did I do? I made the wrong decision." But if I knew this in advance, and had, was able to sit down with you and discuss this, this one paragraph, I might have been totally, you, you might have been able to enlighten me on some other things, but not, in 15 minutes, I'm not gonna usually change my mind. You know, 'cause I was, my mind was set to go in a particular direction today, and I got here, and it changed. I'll be perfectly frank with you. Right, but I think this is great, getting it out in advance, so I don't, please don't take it as a critique. I just, I can't, but, I can't vote on a resolution when I get some, maybe changes to that resolution less than 24 hours in advance. That's me personally.
No, and I appreciate it, and I don't, you know, one of the things I've shared with you is that I, we have a good rapport, so I, I don't take it personally. I, I know that what you're looking for is logical, and that, that, that's why I addressed it, but, you know, I think what I'm saying is, we really wanna step back continually, just like when Dan's talking about the negotiation. The sunshine laws are crippling. It, it's very crippling when you cannot, you know, and, and even when I'm writing this, I'm, every time I'm writing, I'm like, "Okay, I can't say anything Dan told me. It can't be that Dan and I talked." It, you know, I have to present it like it's, it's my stuff, so I am hearing you, but it is, it's a tough task. But we've gotta get better at it.
I think we all know that, but it's, it's tough for us too. I mean, I-
I can tell you for sure that this five-month thing hasn't changed in the last 10 days. The five-month membership hasn't changed in the last two weeks. We had this meeting two weeks ago. It, it did not move it at all. The only issue was, all right, how many members do you put in there, and do we care? So, that's what I thought the discussion would be about today, not, um, you know, we had to say 7,000, we had to say five months, and those things were advertised, so we had no other choice. The only issue was, how many members you're gonna have, or do you do it at all? So, I, I don't know what to tell you.
But I think the good point you're bringing up is earlier is better. You know, send this a week out, and then, then that kind of eliminates all the time crunches.
Yeah, and Dan answered it proper, you know, in the best possible way, and, and he, he read it, or believed it one way, and I believe it another way. So, I interpreted incorrectly, probably, but once again, if I had the opportunity to speak to you, you would have been able to straighten me out on it.
Yeah, and, and these, these things gotta, in Mark's situation, they gotta be presented to us a little different than how this five-month membership was... I mean, when you brought it up, none of us knew what you were talking about, so I, you know, and I, I hope that we've got that worked out, that if you want something, we're certainly listened, but you gotta, you gotta do it a different way than coming up here and say, "And in two weeks, we're gonna discuss it and pass it." Uh, 'cause it might not have even, uh, it, it might have been, the consensus not even to do it. And I know Ray was gone, so it was a 2-2 deal, but just the way, you know, I, I swear, Jim, whether I agree with you or not, if you want something brought up, I'll do it. I'll bring it up. I don't have to agree with it. Dan, I'm sure Dan would too. It's, it's not whether we agree with it, but we should have a long time to think about stuff like this. And, and, and I guess I, I'm learning too, because like I told you, I was sure that when Herb called me twice, that you would tell him, "This is what we have." I had no idea, in my mind, that you would try to set up a different deal. But I'm learning. But trust me, I, I, I like you too. But it's this stuff that gets frustrating to us too, so... Can we start back on this, rules and regulations, though?
Yeah.
Okay. We're on number seven, Jim.
You're on number page seven.
And, and for clarification, it was misinterpreted. I didn't write this document. I, I, I put, pulled pieces together. Some of it was my idea, some of it was members' ideas. And as I said at the very beginning, a lot of it was existing information that's out there today, and just kinda pulled and cut and pasted into one common spot, and of course, a tremendous amount of work from Andy. Um, so, it's, it's not a reflection 100% of what my thoughts are, so...
Now, Jim, kinda, if you let Mark kinda go through this as quick as you can.
Seven.
Actually, I think page seven is-
I think seven is clear, unless somebody has. That's why I said, "I'm good." No, well, you know, well, you know, it, this is stuff that's there. If you guys read it, and you, you say it's good, and when it comes back, make sure that you don't turn around and say you don't like it.
I read it, and I'm okay with that, and page eight.
Where are we?
Yep.
Page eight?
I got, there's some, uh, page eight, I got one.
Okay.
Uh, turtle run hazard marked with red stakes, or played as a hazard lateral. Turtle run is, we didn't mark it with red stakes, correct? So, we just gotta reword that to say, uh...
We need to update with the scrub rule in there?
Yeah. How do we, how do we word that?
I don't know, you know, you, you guys came up with the answer. You should know by heart.
All hazards, turtle run hazards are-
Yeah, we can, I think we should put the scrub rule in there. You know, where it defines the scrub as any area that's not maintained by a mower, and that, yes.
There's no red stakes on it, but deer run, we should add, because we put red stakes on nine, right? So, you may wanna, you know, that we have to honor only hole number nine on deer run. I think that's the only hole that has, uh, stakes.
Hole number nine?
I think so.
I don't know.
Yeah, is that correct, Jim? Is it hole number nine? It's not there, it's not on the sheet.
Correct.
But hole number nine's the only one on deer, so we have to add that in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I don't know that you even need that, but you do need the turtle run scrub jay, 'cause it's not marked with red stakes, you know, it basically says hazards are marked.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's fine.
As long as they don't take up the red stakes again.
Sure.
The private cart, I believe the private cart information is, than what's imprinted.
I just got one question, Jim, and it's simple. Last night, somebody asked me if they're going back home for a couple of months, and a couple more members are coming down without a cart. Can, can they give them the cart to use? Or, I told her to talk with you, and I, I told her if I saw you first, I would ask, but I, I said, "I don't know if... Is there allowed that?"
Okay, oh, so, the question here, I guess, isn't about a fee payment, so in other words, um... So, basically, like, if a member's gone, can some other member who's paid a trail fee use their cart instead of their own?
Right. Well, no, not of their own cart, but, 'cause they don't have a cart.
Okay.
And so, I, I didn't know how to answer that, and I told them I'd ask it, but-
No, that's a good question. I don't see a problem with it. So, in other words, I've joined, let's say, as an annual member, and I, my wife and I joined, so I, and I don't have a cart, so I paid the $300 to use a club cart. But now my best friend's leaving for two months, and he's agreed to loan me his cart, and that way I can keep my bag on his cart and everything. Would that be okay?
And I think they're, they're, they're planning on still paying the $300. It's just a matter of having a cart.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it. I mean, as a member, you have the privilege of trail feeing your own, your own cart. I don't think we would go through the process of prorating them for the two months that they had a cart instead of the other, but if they just wanted to do it for a personal convenience.
And as long as they pay their trail fee, right? Okay, thank you.
Jim, uh, the, the bullet point that says only carts with blue-yellow handicap flag, that, the lines below it, do we need those, in consideration of granting the use of a privately-owned golf cart? I hereby agree to all the above considerations and further wave. I, I don't know what that is.
Since David's not here, I can say it, I think it's lawyer speak, but if David was here, I would ask, ask him if there's a legitimate legal reason to have that there.
No, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
You jumped ahead. Bad. He's bad, you jumped ahead.
I was bad, I jumped ahead.
Well, we can come back to that, but...
You know, the private cart aspect in there is, like I said, verbatim, out of what's been published.
Should, should we have electric carts only?
I believe, yeah. Did we not have that in there?
I was looking for it and didn't see it.
We had it somewhere.
Yeah, it was in, I remember reading it, um, but that's a valid point, uh...
It needs to be in there.
Yes, it does.
It, it, it says privately-owned electric cart. I guess that's...
Yeah.
There we go.
Where is it?
It, the first, first sentence, the first pa- the first bullet point says privately-owned electric golf cart. So, I guess that's basically saying you can't have a non-electric.
Right.
Oh, there's the electric golf cart.
It doesn't specifically exclude gasoline.
Should we put something in there exclusive, 'cause I know that that came up as an issue, Jim, where you had to actually go back to, I think, the gentleman from California or something.
I mean, personally, I would put it in there.
Gas carts will not be allowed as personal carts.
Just stated at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, speaking of rules that we don't enforce, the maximum of two carts per group is one that doesn't work, or isn't enforced. And there are some legitimate reasons for that. For example, Roger Diamond sometimes can't complete 18 holes, so he takes his own cart.
Right.
So, you have three carts in that group.
Jimmy too, I think Jimmy ends up-
So, we're on page eight. I lost my way for a second.
No, we're now on page nine.
We're, we're-
Page nine.
Page nine.
So, I don't know. I mean, do we wanna, I mean, do we wanna have that?
There was a top two bullets, Jim, where it said maximum two persons, two, and then it said maximum of two carts.
I think it's a general rule, it's fine. Um, it gets abused by outsiders.
It does.
Do you see that quite a bit?
Oh, more than two carts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I guess you could throw a quote behind it, and, I mean, I would say-
I mean, we have outsiders that are, you know, a guy brings his girlfriend, and, and a foursome, and he wants his own cart, and so you see three carts going out, and-
Or three golfers take three carts, I've seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we're trying to avoid is four golfers and four carts, obviously.
Right.
I don't know, what do you think, Jim?
I think you've got a couple of exception situations, like, like Dan just mentioned, Roger Diamond. Jimmy Travis would be another one.
Yeah.
Because he brings a genie with him, and, you know, that requires a third cart, but, um...
These are things that happen every day, so I mean, I don't-
Yeah, I think if we control, I think if we control the outsiders' access to carts, and make sure they aren't taking more than they should, um, that's, that's really where your true violations occur, I think.
I think if we wanna do what we say, we should put paragraphs behind that and say, " exceptions can be made by the golf shop staff." And then that at least answers why there's three carts in some groups.
And this is one of the places-
Or some other way to say it.
This is one of the places. We also had the carts not forbidden on the driving range. I guess, I guess it's better to have it in there too many times than not have it in there at all.
Yeah.
You guys wanna look at that line, the in-consideration line? I don't under- I still don't understand it.
Okay.
Whatever you're looking.
Wait, I don't, I still haven't figured out what you're talking about.
I haven't got down there yet.
I'm on the right page, at least.
I'm on the right page.
Well, I feel like that in-consideration line really belongs on the contract the private golf cart owner signs to operate the cart. It's kind of like a release to me, as opposed to something that would be part of this document.
But this is just the agreement. It's what it's saying, is this is the agreement. That's what you're going, wanting to see in the agreement, correct?
Yes, I mean, I think what Ray's talking to me, my guess is that this is designed, so if you run into Ray's cart with your cart, you can't try to pull Sun and Lake in as like a third party in the suit, but I'm-
No, I'm saying, it's, the line that says, "In consideration of granting the use of privately-owned golf cart, I hereby agree to all the considerations and worth of, and further wave." I don't know, I think that's like part of an agreement, where you would sign it at the end.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's the membership.
For this purpose, I don't think we need it.
I agree. I agree.
That, that is one point for using somebody else's golf cart. If we allow that to happen, then we could potentially be drawn into liability.
And I know that, that one guy that's always driving on the driving range and parks his car, a cart right out there, right in front of, is not gonna stop doing it, because, and the only thing I, I don't want is our members, 'cause the last time he did it, one of our members almost gotten in a fight with him, because he wasn't gonna move that cart, so, uh, again, it's, uh-
Is he a member?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And it's, uh, he just does it all the time. He's a big, big user of the driving range. And he'll park that car, you know, by, by side ten, or one tee, and bring it over. But I, I don't know how you wanna handle it.
I'm assuming the pro shop would handle that if we informed them.
Yes, well-
Well, they don't say that either.
I think, yeah, has it, have you seen it in the last month or two?
Yeah, the last, when was it? About two months ago, or a month and a half, that, uh, guy did it, and he asked, somebody on the driving range asked him to move it.
Yeah, I went out there and actually moved somebody who was a non, it was a funny interchange. I drove up, I expected he was a member, and I didn't know that he wasn't. And I, I said, "Can you please move your cart over?" 'cause it was right on the edge of the range. And he's, he said, "Well, your members could park your carts up here." I said, "Sir, I didn't know you weren't a member." I said, "Nobody's supposed to have their cart over here." I said, nobody's supposed to have their cart over here, can you?
And that's all, I just don't want fights, fistfights going on, that's.
Yeah.
Well, I read it, the guy out. I was playing golf and said, I sent Jim a text and said, somebody's on the range. Well, he followed up, he was right there and got him off.
And I think that's probably the best thing to do is, is call the pro shop, but.
And we're working on that. I think one, it's a funny way to say this, but you know, now that we have a really nice range, I think people are respecting it more. I mean, we've got grass everywhere, so let us know. We need to keep them off, we need to keep them off the grass.
So are we striking in-consideration agreeing? This, that would be the, the signature page on the agreement that we sign, that we all sign for, so are we striking that out of this document?
I believe the next three don't need to be there.
Right.
That, that they need to be on the document that the member signs to have a personal cart, so.
Yeah, I think when this was put in there, and I don't, I can't remember if that was part that I put in, it might have been just the actual agreement the members sign.
Yeah.
And so they were just seeing it as, that's the same document, I believe. So we're scratching all three lines?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, because our goal is to get all this in one place on the website instead of multiple.
Right. Right, okay. Just want to make sure.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, golf cart storage, that's pretty straightforward, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Unless somebody had a comment on it.
I'm good, I'm good.
Ray. Okay. The member groups, the member groups, I think, actually, this is, was directly, I, I didn't.
Yeah, this is, this needs to be changed.
Type or something.
The second line reads, in order for new members and/or existing members to clubs bulletin board.
That's exactly what it said.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
I wrote that line.
Did you write that line? So I'm not sure what we're saying.
No, I'm just teasing.
I, I don't know what it means.
I don't know what it means either. I, I think it was a cut and paste that didn't get cut or pasted properly.
So take that out?
Well, I'll look at whatever Andy, this was, he specifically wrote up that part. I'm not, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm almost guessing it's, it's heading people towards the groups if they want to find people to play with.
Yeah, I think so.
That's what it looks like, but something, it looks like a whole line got chopped off.
Check it out.
Okay.
You know, the chicks with sticks and the seasonal, you know, and it's just a, it's just an explanation of what the different groups are, the MGA, the WGA, the golf committees.
I, I thought the chicks with sticks was interesting. Why don't we, I mean, do you ever think about offering the members, buy nine dinners and get one free? I'm serious.
No, I, yeah, and I actually told Cindy when I saw that, I said, Cindy, I don't think we're doing that next year.
Okay.
Well, because I, yeah, I mean, how can you give the chicks with sticks a benefit you don't give to the membership?
So are you suggesting we take out that buy nine dinners?
Yeah, we should take that out.
Gone.
What's a punch card in the restaurant then mean? But what does a punch card in the restaurant mean then? You don't need that either.
Well, that's, that's it, that's all together.
So the punch card comes out too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Golf committee.
We miss Bill Casper's.
Golf committee, you got a bad line in it. What's Capers?
Yeah, it should be Billy Casper going.
Oh, is that Casper?
Yeah.
Is that because it says their ideas and thoughts are brought to Capers, which the liaison to the, I don't, that's not worded correctly.
It really doesn't make sense.
I think it can just, their ideas and thoughts are brought to Casper. You could stop it right there.
Casper management, which acts as a liaison to the board of supervisors.
Yeah, get rid of the win warrant.
Isn't that part of the charter?
Yeah, it does.
Um, it's.
It does. That is part of the charter.
But, yeah, the only thing was I felt like David struck that out in the effect that the golf committee tells management what they'd like and then it's management's decision from a legal basis, whether they present it or not to the board. So that it's not like the golf committee is just recommending something to the board through management.
The golf committee is going to make the, you, you as part, you and I as part of the golf committee will make the decision or decide something. And then you're going to bring it to the board, to the board and present it to the board if it's warranted.
If I, you're right, if I think it's in the best interest of the club.
Yeah, that's the only, I totally agree. You're the kind of the buffer.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure if, if you don't think it's important and somebody talks to two or three of us and we think, you're here for us.
Oh, yeah, no, we're going to talk about it. I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to do is maintain the description of the golf committee as fact finding and not, not a recommendations type committee.
Yep.
And then I, to me, this is in here and well-written, but I think we would just ask the MGA and WGA possibly what, if they want anything, I mean, do we, we could give them their own pages on the website or give them the opportunity to present themselves however they want. I mean, this is fine, but if the, if they want to say it a different way.
I would, I would ask, I'll let you ask them. You know, they're, this, this 36, they got to have a handicap of 36 or less, otherwise they can't qualify for it.
No, they.
That's pretty bad for people who are retired.
They, you know, I haven't highlighted here, but I know somebody joined about the time I did and they had a, a lady had a 40 handicap and they told her she couldn't join. And her husband said, you're telling me she can't join? Well, guess what? She got to join.
I think, I, I don't think they should have that rule.
That's, that's the WGA.
That's their rule though.
That's their rule. You, they're, they're the WGA, they can kind of make the rules they want.
Yeah, but I think they talked, I think this was just before you, Jim, that I know, I don't, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but he, he threatened and she got, she got to join.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And her handicap's higher now than it was then.
Yeah.
So the point being, their point being, and I'm not a member of the WGA, is that she probably ought to be a member of the nine holeers.
That, that's exactly what they're, when I spoke to them, that's what they're trying to do.
I mean, that's up to them, not up to us.
That, that's, you know, that's their golf association. And, you know, I, they can't come and tell us what to do in our.
No, but I mean, if, if, if a couple's retired, we're trying to talk how great Sun and Lake is. So a couple retires and the lady wants to go play golf and she told she can't join because she's not good enough.
Well, they're, they're letting, they're letting her play.
I, I am voting that Ray goes and negotiates with the president of the WGA to change that. Okay, buddy? You do it.
Who is the president?
I think it's Mary, is it Mary White? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, do you guys agree with me?
Well, I don't, it's not up to us.
It's their association.
I, I don't have a dog in that family.
I hate to say that.
I, I agree, Ray, but I could tell you if that husband came to, came to Casper and Casper got it changed somehow, they did allow her to play, but.
Oh, there is one thing I'd like to add to the document that was not there, what to do in case of an emergency.
Rashrod, I don't know, I don't know exactly what it is.
I think we should put something about, you know, call 911 just so we have it on paper.
Mm-hmm.
It's good.
Yeah, it probably ought to be on the top of the table of contents in the very first thing we cover.
I also have a couple other, we're almost done. Whether they're, you, I would assume you want to write something up about your PGA professionals and lessons and, you know, nothing more. I, I don't know, we offer lessons to all levels or whatever.
Yes.
You know, and as far as that, that, that little caption, I don't know that it should be in there. It, once again, I was thrown out, employee hiring practices. I know you have some specific guidelines, but that's your management style. And I'm not so sure it should be or should not be in there. You, you can decide on that unless somebody is strongly opposed to it. And the only other two areas that I would think that were missed, at least at this point in time, and I'm sure there's a lot, would be if you want to put something on the free membership for the first time home buyer and the referral fee. I think that's the referral fee for new member, you know, if you get a new member. I mean, those were kind of, as I was reading through it again, I said, oh, those are two areas in and on there that might be a benefit, but.
No, that's a good catch. And I'll add the stay and play also.
I had stay and play in there.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I did, and if you see it at the bottom after, you know, on the, on the kind of table of contents, it did say stay and play. And I said, well, does he want to have it or not? So since you're so familiar with it, I figured that would be a good one.
I do hear some squawking about the employee free golf for employees. And I don't know, I think that's part of your contract that you can do that, if I remember correctly. But I think it's cost us members in some situations.
Right.
Really? Oh, it's cost us members in the sense that they were members and they're no longer members and they have the ability or that benefit to play. And I bet Jim's totally aware of that.
I, Jim, I just have a couple of questions on these last two. The, I know when Dave Ford was here, A4, yeah. We have a couple of people giving lessons and I asked him and I guess he talked to Tim and Scott and they were okay with that going on. Are, are your assistants okay with what's going on with other people doing it and?
No, that's a wonderful question and somebody else was concerned about that also. No, right, right now, the teaching professionals that we have that aren't on our staff that teach on the range work really well with our staff. And so that's pretty much that, you know, it's by invitation. So when you have a teaching pro, there's kind of three different relationships that happen. Sometimes you pay a teaching pro actually to come and deliver that service. Sometimes they're just there as a service and there's no real change of monies or benefit. So that's the way it is now. And then there's other times where the teaching pros actually have to remit money back to the club. But it works for us now. You know, this is a really busy place and there's a lot of requirements, you know, for up and down. And so the, the clinic program and the chicks with sticks program, if we didn't have David and a couple of the other guys helping out, we wouldn't be able to do those programs. But I do appreciate that support. And if it ever does become where it's not working for us, then I would, you know, bring it to your attention that that's something that we want to curtail or, or control or do something too. But I appreciate your concern for the staff.
I personally believe that you should, that that's something you should deal with. But I was told that Tim and Scott didn't care, but your two new ones cared. Now, that's only a rumor and that's why I brought it up because I, I, I don't want those two unhappy because you've got two good young men.
No, and they'll be great and we'll take care of them. And, and actually, when I talked about it becoming, you know, an issue, where it would become an issue to me would be if you had a senior staff. So in other words, so you've got Andy and let's say Mike Lemire was still in that office and you had another seasoned professional and there wasn't enough teaching to be gained.
Okay.
But, you know, I love JJ and Tom, but they're both new, you know, they're not going to give you the lesson that David Shoemaker is going to give you after he's been doing it for 30 years, so, but I appreciate that.
I just didn't want them upset, yeah.
You just want to keep them happy because, I mean, there's a lot of, like you say, professionals here and, you know, it's a long, because that's part, that's how they supplement some of their income is through the lessons, I'm sure, so.
And, and the member hiring, the only thing I have, and I think we've talked about it, it's just, I, I don't want anybody that works for you has to work extra because you have one of our members playing in something that they should be working, you know, if you know what I mean, I mean.
No, no, we've, like we've said, it, it's not a policy that I'll put in print, but I'm, I'm not in favor of trying to make an employee walk the employee member line because it's a non-line to me.
Yeah.
If, if you're an employee and you're a member, like one of our cartmen's an employee and a member, but he's never acted like a member in front of me.
Right.
And what I mean by that is a member can say anything or do anything. Well, if an employee is an employee member, they can't.
Yeah.
So you really, if you're going to make that decision, that you're going to make somebody an employee member, you really have to be very certain of how they're going to act in every situation because they're, you know, kind of to be seen and not heard, which is hard for a number of people to do. But, you know, the benefit is important. We do have a number of people that work for us so they can play golf. The benefit is pretty, it's a pretty good benefit during the summer. You know, we're pretty lenient during the summer because they're not really displacing anybody. But during the winter, the, the benefit is very, you know, very limited. It's before eight o'clock and pretty much after two o'clock. So I think before the benefit might have been greater, but it, it's not as big a benefit as it was at one time.
Yeah, well, I think all our concerns are just because we've got some good employees and, and I, I know you know we do too, so.
No, this is a great place to work and we were really lucky to catch JJ and Tom, you know, Tim and, well, Mike moving over to F and B and then Tim and Scott, you know, leaving left a big hole and we've been lucky to get Tom and JJ and Pat to fill in and kind of not miss a beat so far.
Okay. You got something else?
Just a couple of positive comments. You know, I, I haven't actually, more of my experience has been with Tom since he came on board versus JJ. Oh, I've had some. And I think it's a, a real plus for the membership to see the interaction of the guys out there, like even Beat the Pro and some of these, when they get out there on the couples tournaments and they're hitting the golf balls, the tee shots. That, that involvement, that exposure, I think, goes a long, long way with the membership and, and I hope they continue to do it. I, I'm sure you will. The other thing is, I do get another, some feedback from a wedding last, last weekend, nothing but accolades, positive feedback. They said, everything from soup to nuts, outside, the ceremony was great, inside it was great, the service was outstanding, the food was outstanding. I mean, everything right down the line. And I know a lot of times you hear us and others that are kind of complaining, but at the same token, I think that, you know, and if it's appropriate, I'll, I'll even write a, a note to Mike saying that these people contact me or if you wish, you can just pass it on. But quite a few people came up to me about this wedding. It was the 11th, which was last weekend.
Yeah.
Sun, Saturday. Is it Saturday? I can't even remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, Saturday's wedding.
I will let him know that is great to hear and I, I do know there's a lot of camaraderie here and, and I do look at us as a team. You know, the golf committee, the board, every individual member in the staff is a team and I see the gavel. I just don't want to miss, you know, Monday, I'm really looking forward to them getting that panel here on property. Water's supposed to be flying on Wednesday at, you know, full force. I, I, our golf courses are really in great shape considering where we are with water. So thank, you know, thank God, I, I think the greens are back, everything's back, so. But I do appreciate everybody's support through all this trouble and a long, you know, long period of time.
Very good.[1783.51]